Dan, can you hear me?
I cannot not hear you. So can you repeat your question?
No question.
So Todd had stepped down to go talk to the attorney. Can Kelly be present for Todd to close the closed session?
Oh yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's we're open at this point. So basically, someone needs to make the motion to certify. And then basically Kayla just needs to take a roll call vote. Or actually, the chair, sorry, the chair bed would take a roll call vote.
We're live.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters are awfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Mr. Logicino, do you approve of this?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Do you need a second, Dan?
We we do need a second, if someone didn't.
I'll second.
I have a second about Ms. Kilpatrick. Now, now I got to go back through the roll call. Mr. Logicino, do you approve of this?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Do I need to vote in, or?
Yeah, she well.
Mr. Goode.
Yeah, since you were, I mean, typically, you're not a voting member. So no, you. You're not a voting member of the commission, but basically, people who are not voting members can still be present. So I would say you would not vote because you're not a voting member of the commission.
Okay, this has been approved. All members that were present.
How did the chair vote?
The chair votes approval.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm done.
You give it thirty seconds. As of tonight. Good, good, good.
Oh, we'll just get back over here. We got at least a few more pages of this.
Plans on speaking credit here, please sign in with your address.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna have to sign here.
I've been standing out there. And I tried to put this all, I printed it landscape and I said, there's one reaction, the other one. Public on websites all come here. But. So. I'm sorry. I tried my best. Well.
We're gonna ask you all to speak. Time to your neighbors swish up together. The one caveat to my plan is the public comment comes before a public hearing. So everybody gets to. For your public hearing. You haven't already meet neighbor. Be in charge of the air conditioning and I will give you the high sign.
That seven oh two will be opening, it flew by the county planning commission regular meeting for August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. The first order of business, pledge allegiance, followed by moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the revolver which says, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item of business is director's report.
And I would like to keep this brief. Just a few quick updates for the group, reminder for the attending Wawa project, we have public hearings for next Wednesday. For the board to consider the developers request for a waiver on the sign requirements. Now, you may recall that the developers submitted a sign permit application and one of the signs was too large for the ordinance. So they'll be requesting a waiver on that. Update on solar. We just had our work session, but I did want to point you to the second bullet point. Under solar, because of the board action on July third, there will be utility scale solar and allow juice under A one of an S U P. We had two outstanding S U P applications which have been denied. Since they are no longer allowed to use in A one, so those have been kicked back to the developers in question and they will need to reach to get. Just to remind everybody, those cases were S U P twenty three oh one for White Oak and twenty three oh nine for. And just a quick staff update, we have a new staff, Trey Walton is our new planner slash G I S technician, he started yesterday. And just to get a quick update in James River Water Authority, a there was a minor subdivision plant for utility lot which has been approved. And there is construction underway, the Southern Parlor County on the raw water main is there. And just to remind everybody, we have a site development plan, a special use permit on the agenda for tonight's meeting. The S U P, of course, is for the campground, the site development plan is for commercial retail development on South Boston Road. We have received two applications for roll cluster subdivisions, one off of Justin Drive. Near Lake Monticello, the other rolling road, Dryry Creek in the Western Parlor County. The technical review committee did review those in August. At least one of those we plan to bring for the planning commission is September, the one off Justin Drive. The other one, we have some questions about. So we're not sure yet, we'll be presenting that September and we have to put that off a month. The special use permit you see, that actually has been withdrawn, the. What happened there was there were, there was a parcel up in the zone cross or there is zone die one. Basically, a parent tract, they had that S U P back in two thousand nine. Then two thousand eighteen, the lot was split and a second lot was divided off of that lot. They having discussions with both property owners and the county attorney. It was determined that the S U P really, the existing S U P really only applied to the parent tract. And that we, this, the owner of the second lot, which is G F L Environmental, thought they would need an S U P for their lot and their use. And and speaking, after speaking with them, and reviewing the ordinance and taking another look, it was determined that what they're doing is already a by right use and I one. Therefore, there's no S U P needed there. Just to remind everybody, we are planning for the September work session, regular meeting to be over in the servant courtroom. And for now, at least, October, November meetings will be held in here in the mors room, that is subject to challenge. I'll take any questions.
Want to have any question?
No.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment sections. Anyone wishes to come to speak about any item that's not on the agenda for tonight, please come forward, state your name and address, you will eliminate five minutes. Do you know one come forward?
I was coming off stage, sorry. Good, very well. I thank you guys for allowing me to speak, I'm Tony Dyrle, I'm actually from Goochlin. Resident of Virginia my whole entire life, so I consider myself a.
I named your name and your address.
Yep, Tony Dyrle, Goochlin, Virginia, two five seven two Shepherd Town Road. Yeah, so lived in Virginia my whole life, Hampton Roads when I was in the military, grew up in southwest Virginia. Live in central Virginia now, forgive me, but I've not touched northern Virginia, don't plan on it, but anyhow, with that being said. So I'm speaking. You know, I've been observing the solar ordinance and and you guys looking at switching over to a solar. District and and quite, I'd be lying if I said that I was for it at the time. But the fact of the matter is, is that you guys have put in a tremendous amount of time, you've done your homework. And all in all, you've established the rules, the rules are established. And so from a developer's perspective, that's all we could ever ask. Reading through the the solar ordinance. It's strict. It's it's pretty strict, but you know what? That's okay. From a resident's perspective, you have Goochlin, you know, living in Goochlin, beautiful, beautiful land, it's a, you've done some smart maneuvers and and I can't can't argue that. There is one aspect of this that to me doesn't make sense. And I'm just going to go through a couple of these things, and it's the twenty foot minimum between panels for fire trucks. I get it. If you have a developer that comes in and doesn't put safety number one, kick him out of this county. They shouldn't be even in front of you. It's extremely important, but the twenty foot separation doesn't necessarily do what you're trying to accomplish. That twenty foot separation, just to give you an example, it it kind of defeats the purpose. So if you implement this restriction, a small five megawatt facility would normally need fifty acres of land. You put in this twenty foot between every row, you now need seventy acres to be able to accomplish that. And just keep on thinking about as it goes further and further along, it gets higher and higher, defeats the whole purpose. There are plenty of ways, and I can give you guys examples from other counties that are successful, and I know you've mentioned a couple of times. Well, that's not Flavanna, I get it, I get it, but there's some examples out there of smart ordinance language that helps protect that safety or implement that safety. So putting the blanket twenty foot is, it's very difficult for a developer or any solar project to come in and be able to do it to the standard that you're going to want as well. I would think that another option, just to kind of give you an idea that I've seen in other counties, every hundred and fifty feet, you put that twenty foot minimum on there, that makes a little bit of sense, but doing twenty foot for every single road, it's it defeats the purpose of what you're trying to accomplish. And on top of that, you know, if you have get that twenty feet, then you have to go in, you have to compact the soil, you have to make sure those 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 the sections in between are navigable by trucks. That's not necessarily feasible in many different ways, so it just doesn't make sense. Every hundred and fifty feet that, I mean, that's still tough, that's still tough, but it 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 will accomplish what you're trying to do. And then to take it one step further, you can put conditions in the ordinance individually per project, if there's concerns on any kind of safety. So I would just highly recommend for your benefit and everyone's benefit to reconsider that twenty foot. Give yourself some flexibility, give the board a supervisor when it comes to voting flexibility. And that one aspect of it, I think, needs to be adjusted a little bit, and that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other person have any comments, please come forward, state your name and address, you will eliminate five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I'm Gary Wood. I'm the president and CEO at Central Virginia Electric Law and Firefly Fiber Brotherhood. Got my Firefly shirt on, but I'm going to give some comments tonight on solar. I wanted to give you a couple of bits of of information on the importance of being able to get solar and get this settled so that we can figure out how to deal with solar in Flavanna. A little over a week ago, in the PJM region, the regional grid had its capacity auction for the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. Capacity costs in the Dominion area went up fifteen hundred percent for people who have to provide service in the Dominion Zone. Fifteen hundred percent. It went up because there's not enough capacity in the grid to serve the coming load. Because then people take advantage of the market, push that price up. Next year, the first of June, we will start collecting an additional thirteen million dollars from co-op customers for the next year, just for this one piece, one little piece of power supply. There'll be another auction in December for the next year. We're not sure where those numbers are going. One way to avoid buying more of that capacity and paying that cost is by making power local. So the co-op, when we build solar, this is one of the ways it helps offset costs. Under these new capacity costs, on eight megawatt solar farm, it'd save, would save us a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per megawatt. So you can run the numbers on that. It's over a million dollars a year, that would save members of the co-op. About twenty five percent of co-op members are in Flavanna County. So that's direct savings back to the county. So we need to figure out a way that we can get these installed. Now, the second thing is, I mentioned when I was here before, that we had taken an option on a property to start looking at an eight megawatt installation, it's agricultural zone. The week after we took the option, the boat came to eliminate that as an option. But we're still trying to pursue a way to get solar built under hopefully new ordinance going to be passed. We had eighty acres to get eight megawatts of solar on it. Eight megawatts used to take up about forty acres of with the solar panels and then with the buffering, we we could fit that in eighty acres. Under the new setback requirements, we can only build on ten acres of that eighty. Not forty. And our eight megawatt project goes down to two megawatts. And if we have to have twenty feet between them, now that goes down to one megawatt. And it it's just, it's not doable. That's fine. If if that's what the county decides. But you I would really, really urge you to give some thought to whether five hundred foot setbacks are appropriate for eight acre, eight acre projects, which have more perimeter per megawatt of output than the really large ones. And if if we're next to certain things that that need a little more buffer, I am fine with that. But this particular property is on three sides, it's wooded. The neighboring property is wooded. So we're, we're doing five hundred foot setbacks from wooded areas. So just please be careful, I will be submitting some other comments and trying to give a little more background, but this is having a very direct impact on on Flavanna residents, as well as on central Virginia members in general. And I really hope that we can find a way, I still think that for for truly small, non mega solar, I would like to see the the utility scale cut off so that for small local utilities, we can still fit under with a fifteen or twenty megawatt limitation under older rules and and places. Thank you. You're doing good work, keep at it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Skylar, so I'm here speaking on behalf of Energy Right. I had the chance to speak with many of you all this past fall, when you began this conversation on the solar front and have since been able to attend, I think, every single one of the solar committee meetings over the past couple of months. So I want to commend Ms. Kilpatrick and Ms. Johnson Morgan for taking the time to think so critically about clean energy and how solar might fit into Flavanna. It's been a lot of work, a lot of meetings. Wanted to share a couple of thoughts with you all this evening on the ordinance as it stands now. And specifically, some of the setbacks, our organization, of course, wants to respect the property rights of landowners, but also respect the rights of neighbors and make sure that any project that comes to a community is delivering the best economic case for tax revenue and economic growth in the surrounding area. I want to focus on setbacks, and I think there are a lot of unintended consequences, as Mr. Wood stated, that folks might not have considered so far. These incredible setbacks are five to ten times the distance of the average of most other counties within the Commonwealth. Property line setbacks statewide average is at a hundred nine feet. Our organization encourages a little bit more than that, about a hundred fifty feet, two hundred, we can get behind. Five hundred feet really hurts your landowners, really hurts your smaller landowners. And similar story with with setbacks from residences, five hundred feet makes sense, that's what Dominion said when they came and spoke to you all. But five hundred feet from property line, five hundred foot from residents, that's kind of a distinction without a difference there. Most specifically, this is going to hurt your smaller landowners, who might want to put ten, twenty, thirty acres into a small scale solar facility. If you have five hundred foot setbacks around a twenty five acre small facility, you're needing one hundred extra acres in just the setbacks. That means the setback area is three times the size of the solar facility itself. I would really encourage you all to to rethink that and do something a little bit reasonable, a little bit more reasonable. When the solar committee was discussing this with Mr. Dan Witt and the county attorney, he said a few times that you all or committee members stated that they wanted to have flexibility based on the topography, based on site specifics. And you all could grant waivers to lower those numbers. But Mr. Wittens said that the exceptions cannot become the rule, and it might be wiser for the county, like most other counties do, to start with smaller, more reasonable setbacks and increase those on a case by case basis. So you're not having to waive requirements of the ordinance every time a smaller landowner might want to bring a project forward for your proposal. Also, the setbacks to wetlands, a lot of these decisions are mandated by the Department of Environmental Quality, who goes through a very robust process deciding how far project areas can be from wetlands and avoidance and minimization of stormwater and erosion sediment control. The pond setback, I think, is is really not needed. You're going to be building ponds on some of these facilities to make sure that stormwater doesn't leave the site and that water quality and quantity don't change pre-development versus post-development. All those things are already required in their state processes, he's in state in place for those. So thank you all for your attention. Thank you to our solar committee members for such a great job over the past several months, and of course, we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and speak? If not, hold in the public hearing, first public comment section at this time and go forward with the meeting. Thank y'all. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the July ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Does anybody have any comments about that meeting, any corrections or updates of anything on the minutes from the last meeting?
I spelled your name right?
Finally.
If if there's no comments or any needed, any corrections or anything like that, do I have a motion?
Make a motion in fifty minutes.
Have a motion by Mr. Logicino to accept the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Schifflick. How can you, you can't second because you weren't president. Second for Ms. Kilpatrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye for zero and one abstained. And the minutes are approved. Okay, the next item is a public hearing, S U P twenty four oh three Camp Yalla Cardo LLC.
And this is a proposed special use permit for a property in the fourth unit district, tax map, tax map sixty, section eight, part of twenty five. This is campground under section twenty two dash four dash two point two, the subject parcel is a little more than thirteen acres. Now, to give you a quick indication of where it is, down the southwest of Columbia. And here's the parcel in question at the corner of Floredale and Brimo Roads. Flogo Road runs to the north, Brimo Road to the east. So, so the applicant has actually submitted some additional information since we prepared these materials, initially is proposing twelve campsites for this this site. Each campsite consists of platform deck, geodesic dome, fire pit, picnic table and wood burning hot tub. And the applicant is here tonight, I understand he has scaled down the development just a little bit to ten campsites. Be developed in phases. There's a division of the campsites, fifteen space parking lot to accommodate vehicles, the applicant has advised there will not be recreational vehicles allowed on the property. Other amenities, centrally located pavilions for dining and recreational activities, walking paths, a camp store for guests operated by the non-operational R V, which would have limited selection of food and merchandise items. And this slide shows you what a campsite might look like, and the upper left is the geodesic dome. You'll also see picture of fire pit. Just to give you an idea what the the sites will look like. The development, and here's a revised, a conceptual plan from the the applicant. You'll see the campsites noted in the white dots. You'll see the parking spot down here in the left part of your screen and you also see the creek that intersects through the property. So the technical review committee did have a chance to look at this. They did have some concerns, I'm not going to read these line by line, I'll just say most of these had to do with safe fire, safety, fire suppression, emergency access in the life. And more than the comments, the E N A stormwater plan was really one of the few exceptions, but everything else here is really for, and the repairing buffer requirements for North Creek, but everything else really has to do with fire suppression, fire safety, and really safety for users of a campground. Was there many concerns about this particular project? And so if this does get approved, staff are recommending some conditions. And you see these on your screen here, submitting a site plan for approval that addresses concerns stated by the technical review committee. And again, the other, I believe, has in his revised plans, address those concerns. Maintain the site eat norly manner to protect the visual presence on the roadway and adjacent properties. Comply with noise ordinance. And of course, we we reserve the right to go out and inspect the site for compliance at any time. And of course, under section twenty two dash seventeen dash four F two of the county code, the board does reserve the right to revoke the special use permit if they determine that the property owner has substantially breached the conditions. The error is here, and I'm guessing you want to address the planning commission?
Yeah.
Did I ask you a question?
Sure.
I noticed in the second phase of development, it would consist of six additional campsites and one additional bath house with enough facilities to accommodate the expansion. That's kind of vague, not really telling us whether what facilities or or what we would, would we have any, the county have any say in that? Since it just says enough facilities to accommodate the expansion.
Sir, if I if I may, I can speak to that. I I wrote that sentence. And it really, that was just to say enough toilets, showers and sinks. Sorry that the language is vague, but it it really was just saying that the bath house would be enough to accommodate the number of sites that would be added and fixed to.
Space to accommodate it by this particular conditions?
Yeah, well, the the conditions, they would cover the entire development.
So is that ten to sixteen or four to ten? So is that 10 to 16 or 4 to 10?
What are you saying? You mean campsites? It was originally 12 campsites, so it would be 10, correct?
That's correct.
So it'll be five in each face. You're welcome to come up and.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate your time and I won't take a whole lot of it. I I just want to say, you know, I'm Kevin Wilson. I'm the owner of this project. I'm really excited. About the prospect of bringing this to Fluvana County. My wife Laura over here is my both my better half and my my partner in this. The technical review committee and the recommendations that we got out of there. I think that. What we have done in addition to speaking with members of the community. Is really tried to. Make a plan that. That takes into consideration, you know, the the safety. Of everybody involved. The last thing that we want to do is is create anything that would be a nuisance or hazardous to anybody there. You know, you see that in. And apologies that this plan was submitted only recently, but. You will see that there is a change where we're, we don't want to do any development. On the far side of North Creek. Bringing everything to a little bit. Closer centrally located area makes it a little bit easier for EMS and fire, should they need to access the site and get to anybody. It does, you know, we made off of off the recommendations from the TRC. Some changes to the size and scope of the the pathways. To make sure that, you know, fire vehicles and ambulances, should they need to get in there. And then we submitted a sort of a policy document outlining what. You know, what we call our fire safety guidelines, you know, this would guide how. You know, how we would train any staff, how we would, you know, sort of operate and really just trying to demonstrate that we are taking. You know, we take this very seriously. The last thing I want to do is is, you know. Hurt the forest, you know, it's that that the attraction to me and to our guests would be that we have. This beautiful forest in this area that, you know, people can come and feel relaxed and unwind and feel a little bit of isolated. I do want to also just acknowledge that in terms of the the design of our our site plan. You know, we recognize that we have, we have neighbors, we have, we have people that are using this area and all of our. All of our intention is to leave fairly significant setbacks on any development that we're doing here. First and foremost, we really value the tree canopy that's there, and so we really don't want to take down very many trees. Beyond that, you know, we we don't have any intention. Of of messing that sight lineup that exists today. We like the idea that we are set back into the woods and that we can offer our guests. You know, private accommodations where they can feel isolated and a little bit off the grid. So that that is really, you know, our aim with all of this. You can see on the map that's on the screen, you know, the entire left side of where the driveway exists right now, we don't plan on doing anything there. To, you know, just to maintain a sizable buffer with the nearest residential house, I believe. That's a little bit further through the woods that way. That being said, I, you know, I welcome any questions from the committee, chance to talk with anybody about this. I think this is a great project that. You know, the county can be proud to have and something that will be. You know, sort of an exciting addition to Southern Fluvana County. I do have, I I brought something that I've been putting together. It's. This is for our website, but it's just some rules and regulations that we would have on our like frequently asked questions. And if anybody would like to review those or see them, you're welcome to. I'm happy to give them to the. The committee as well, if you'd like to see them. I mean, some of it is just like booking and cancellation, but some of it is like. We're not going to allow ATVs or dirt bikes, you know, no hunting on on the property, that sort of thing. So. Some of those are germane to this conversation. I figured I would bring those along as well. Last thing that I will say is I actually I visited our architect just this afternoon and so. I was able to get a copy of just some sketch drawings of. The central bath house and I sort of wanted to share that with anybody that wanted to take a look. Just get a sense of sort of the the architecture that we're trying to bring to this and sort of how it it comports with sort of the the rural nature of the area. It won't be visible from the road, but it's nice to know that it is something that fits in in the space. That being said, I I welcome any questions and, you know, anybody, you know, my cell phone and email is is out there and everybody is welcome to. Reach out and give me a call and let me know what they're thinking. So.
I have a few questions. There are two neighboring communities in that area, West Bottom and Cloverdale. And Cloverdale Road, I really have some concerns about traffic and how people are going to get to your campsite. Because not everybody is going to come down Route 6 and come up Brimo Road. A lot of them are going to cut in by the academy or by Fork Union and come through Cloverdale, which is a very populated. Area. Have you, the first thing, talked to any of those people in those communities, not the four or five properties that borders it, but the community itself? And see what their thoughts and opinions are on having that campsite there. Yeah, campsite sounds good. Now don't get me wrong, but. I have some concerns about traffic.
Yeah.
The road itself, it's, you know, one road with no center line. The amount of traffic that's going to come back and forth. I have concerns about the creek that is there. And how all this ties into that creek, but. I think it would be beneficial for me as a planning commissioner, because I am familiar with those two areas, because I lived in one of them.
Yeah.
Is to talk to the people in the community to see how they feel about this campsite coming in, a community meeting. That's what I would like to see done before any of us make a decision on there, because it is their neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And it surrounds them and. Both neighborhoods and people in both neighborhoods and nobody knows anything. That's all right. No, nobody knew anything about this campsite. Or the proposed campsite, and I think it would be beneficial to you to talk to them to see how they feel about it.
Yeah.
I am, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I still have questions about the road, you know, the traffic pattern. How are you gonna? How are you gonna get anybody, people to come through there? Because. The homes in Cloverdale are very close to Cloverdale Road. They're not like they're a far distance off, off. People. Walk that road, kids walk that roads, community work, walk that roads. And if you have all this additional traffic coming in, how are we as a county is going to control that traffic? Because I'm almost positive, most of them are going to cut through Fork Union and come down there instead of going down to Route 6.
Yeah, absolutely. I, so I will say that I just want to make sure I get my date right. On. On May 21st, I went to the 10 closest addresses in both directions and left letters. Saying. Hey, this is what we're doing, introducing ourselves. I had my email and cell phone on that. I didn't go much further. But I absolutely welcome commentary from the community. The last thing I want to do is. Have anybody think that we're trying to like shoehorn this in or or anything along those lines. As far as traffic concerns go. You know, first. I think that it's important just to to think of of what volume could we actually? Be creating here. We're marketing this specifically towards couples who are almost entirely going to be arriving in cars together. The occupancy of these domes is is two adults. So in phase one, we're looking at five to six domes being built. So 12, 12 cars if everybody drove on their their own. Yes, that's that's 12 more cars on the road, but. You know, we're not talking triple digits. We're not talking about, you know, building a concert venue. We're not talking about. And and just to to speak to that, we have no plans of having events, weddings, concerts, anything like that in this space that that's completely not part of this plan. So I I I hear you. I will also say that. Every, you know, every time that I have been directed from points north, southeast, and west, as I've been driving here, I've used Brimo Road to to approach. I I have on my own volition gone up Cloverdale to to see the area and all of that. You know, in terms of our marketing and directing our guests on how to get to Camp Yalla Cardinal. We would certainly, you know, I'm I'm happy to say, you know, come down Brimo Road, you know, use these directions to get to the camp. You know, the last thing that I want to do is be sending multiple cars through, you know, heavily residential areas.
But I'm taking that consideration, you're about folks going to amenities that are in Fork Union, which is the closest place to them.
Yeah.
They're not going to go all the way down Brimo Road, hit Route 6, come up to Dixie to go to Fork Union. They're going to go right up Cloverdale Road. And go to Fork Union. I mean, that's just logic. I wouldn't go that way either. Why make those extra turns? So I'm looking at the condition of the roads. The people will use Cloverdale Road and go through the neighborhoods and how we can do something to help support those neighborhoods. With that additional traffic is where I'm getting at.
Sure.
Yeah, it might be 12 cars, but it's 12 more cars.
Yeah.
And but taking consideration all the people who live in Cloverdale and West Bottom who uses that road, and now you're bringing additional traffic in. I know that, like I said, I know they're going to use Cloverdale Road.
Yeah.
Which is going to be probably the biggest road they use instead of going through West Bottom. Again, that's a little extra distance. They're going to use Cloverdale Road, which brings me back through the academy. Where Fork Union Military Academy is, and we have our kids there and they have their track meets. Out there on Cloverdale Road, so they're using that road too. So you are bringing something additional there. And it's a safety concern for me for that area. And I just think it would be beneficial to talk to those neighborhoods in addition to. Fork Union Military Academy, who uses that property a lot also in that road.
Yeah, absolutely. I would be more than happy to to set up a community meeting and 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 speak with everybody.
Isn't that part of the process still? Does it not, does it not need to be? Doesn't, I don't think it's required.
It's not, I don't think it's required. I mean, that's a.
I guess it's just always kind of been done, so.
So, but I, yeah, I saw this and. I only heard about this from someone else and I was like, hmm, so I reached out to the neighborhoods. And said, John, know anything about this? No, what are you talking about? So. You know, to get any project going, I think is beneficial to not just talk to the few neighbors that are boarding the property, but the whole community. To see how they feel, because they might have some suggestions for you.
Absolutely.
On how to accommodate this and. That's just my opinion. I don't know if anybody else have anything.
Well, I share the opinion. And have expressed that we should go beyond the minimum requirement under state law. Of reaching out to immediately chase adjacent property owners. To consider community in a larger sense and have that kind of dialogue back and forth. Because a lot of good can come out of that and it can help tweak a a project to be welcome within the community.
Absolutely.
Encourage that.
Yeah, no, and I I just to be clear, I I I don't want anybody in the commission to think that I've been deliberately avoiding that. You know, I. I prior to any public notice going out, I did reach out to. You know, everybody in as far as the eye could see, basically, I drove up and down the road and left letters. And heard from a couple people through that outreach. But I'm absolutely, I welcome the opportunity to hold a more. You know, formal public meeting and 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 address community concerns right there. You know, perhaps we could speak afterwards. You could maybe give me a little guidance on. On the best people to reach out, because I I would hate to hold that meeting and not have people show up or not to have the right people show up.
I could tell you have one person in here already.
I thought there might be the the right people here in the room.
You put back 10, right?
I'm sorry, say again. That's correct.
That's phase one. Or it's phase two.
No, 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 10 would be the the total that we would ever build and and if I'm. We're we're asking for an SUP that would accommodate 10. Just in in total transparency, I think that eight to nine is really what. When we sort of played with the land, you know, we're like, yeah, I think that that's probably where it tops out.
Well, I will say, you know, I like the idea of this, I really do. I was reading a lot of the materials and I was, I kind of laughed a little bit. Instead of bringing more people and. Help employees and all this stuff and businesses in Fork Union, but there really aren't any. Hopefully this will encourage people, but I think you're getting further by talking to the people that live there.
We're sorry, I might appreciate input from Sal's business card.
Well, I I was gonna say, I I other than Sal's, I need more restaurants.
Or delivery service to the camp, you know, so.
Let me ask you a question. You'd be open to having a community meeting and so forth like that?
Yes, of course.
We haven't had this before and it's going to come up for us. Would you be in favor of deferring this until you can have this community meeting?
I mean, my my interest, I, you know, I would very much like to have this approved and move forward, but I, you know, I will defer to the the board here. And if if it's contingent on on having that that meeting, then absolutely, like I'm I'm here to, I'm here to work with.
I'm just asking you, we we we'd have to handle that differently later on if we did.
Yeah.
I'm asking you.
I I would I would prefer, you know, a a recommendation to approve out of the board. But I, you know, I'm I'm happy to set a date, a time and place for for a community meeting right now.
Forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, but I would say that if this came to me on the board and there wasn't a community meeting, that I wouldn't be inclined to vote for it if you weren't willing to sit down. And talk about it and I think I'd probably speak for. At least a couple shaking heads over there that know that community well, so.
I mean, it's a big change. It's a change to a community that's been there forever and you're bringing something new in and I think you will get further by speaking to them.
Yeah.
And see what concerns they have. And I think, you know. It would be fine for us as a commission if we heard from the community too, as to, you know, what their concerns and issues are before we make a decision.
Sure.
Why we're here.
So.
Yeah, this is the community.
Again, I think it's a good idea to have if the community is on board with it, so.
So my my thinking is the fact is if you had a minute of meeting, the people would know more about it.
Yeah.
And just not just what they've heard and so forth like that. And I'll be frank with you, if we, if I do open the public hearing and we go to a vote on this, I think it will be deferred. I'm just telling you. I'm just asking you, and I don't know whether I'm doing this properly or not, but I'm asking you whether you would like to defer it on your own.
I think I'm I'm reading the tea leaves correctly here. Say that I'm I'm happy to defer this until I have an opportunity to speak with everybody in the community.
Well, I refer, you know, we have people here, you know, I would like to hear from them too.
Absolutely.
Before you make your decision, at least you can hear something of their opinions and maybe that'll help you make a decision too, so.
Can we do that without the?
Yeah, actually, we were just talking about that. The the planning commission could take action to defer this. And we'll go to public hearing this time.
I think that we have everybody here. I wouldn't want to deny anybody's chance.
So I'm just throwing it out there for you. I'm not advocating for it one way or the other.
Well, I think since everybody is here, I mean, we can at least listen to those who are here and still have a community meeting, because I don't think everybody here represents those two communities. Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, no.
My my family lives in Cloverdale, so that's how I know. And my other part of my family lives in West Bottom.
Yeah.
So I know the area very well. And when I heard this, I actually drove down there to see exactly where you were trying to put this and I saw the public hearing signs.
Yeah.
And I was like, hmm, it's really close to these two neighborhoods and so.
So would deferring to gate public comments at a deferred public public hearing? Well, would there still be allowed to be public comments there? Because I remember there was some stipulations on that with Marina Point and maybe some things changed. Hey, Dan, you want to?
Yeah, July 1st, the code change. Previously, when you deferred, you had to have another public hearing. July 1st, the code change. Now, when you defer, you do not have to have another public hearing. It would just come back as unfinished business. So you could have the public hearing tonight. You could still have a motion to defer and it would come back as unfinished business at your next meeting.
But it could not come back as a public hearing. Correct.
Unless there was substantially different information with the application that would require another public hearing. You know, there would still be another public hearing at the board level, but there would not be another required public hearing at the planning commissioner's level.
So if the applicant defers it himself without a public hearing being held. Then we still could not have a public hearing when it come back up? Uh, then we still could not have a public hearing when it come back up?
I mean, the public hearing has been advertised tonight. I would go ahead and hold the public hearing. I mean, normally procedure would be if the applicant, you know, deferred in advance to the meeting, you may not have the public hearing tonight, but just. Uh, you know, deferring right at the same time as the public hearing, I don't think it'd be proper to um, not have the public hearing tonight.
So I asked that because I knew something went into effect and the last thing I wanted to do was not give the opportunity for a public hearing on this, so.
So if I understood that correctly, we have a public hearing. We can defer it based on a community meeting and then come back and decide?
Correct. A comeback is unfinished business at your next meeting.
Then you wouldn't have another public care.
Right. At least we have the opportunity to listen to people, public, yeah, public comments.
Well, you can't have public comments, but we have it anyway.
Well, I just would personally like to hear from the community. I think having this public hearing personally. Tonight, without all potential people knowledge of what's happening. I don't know, I just think that's wrong.
Okay. I, I just was, was hoping that we would be able to get it deferred and often the, the community could hear. Uh, from a community meeting and then people that really wanted to speak could come speak at another time. Uh, but we're gonna go ahead and do it uh, like the county attorney has suggested.
Cause that's what I was hoping too.
I was just hoping for.
Well, those members of the community could still speak during public comment period at your next meeting. That would be before unfinished business, so they would have their five minutes to speak.
Normally under public comment, you can't uh, speak about an item that's up for uh.
It would be an action matter, not.
Okay, it would be an action matter, not a public.
Correct, that, correct. They'd be able to speak on it since it's not a public hearing at your next meeting.
Anybody else have any questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing uh, for S U P twenty four oh three. Camp Yellow Cardinal LLC. I have a speaker's list here. Uh. The first person I have on the list is Jen Montague. Uh, please state your name and address. You have a limited five minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Jennifer Montague, thirty-two thirty-five Cloverdale Road in Brimwood Bluff. And I'm just a few doors down from this proposal. Um, I do, I'm a newbie compared to the people. This is my community. These are my neighbors. We're very tight, even though we're several whatever apart. We look out for each other. In talking to many people in Cloverdale. They were born and raised on Cloverdale. There's families, multiple families that live on Cloverdale and they're, they had no idea. This piece of information, first of all, everyone I've talked to, including the people that live close to this, which I'm very close. Some of them received this in their mailbox. It was shoved in their mailbox. No one ever visited or talked to anyone. No one ever mentioned anything. This was given to us in our mailbox, almost like saying, hi neighbor. And everybody that was just, I don't know, who got this in their mailbox? Anybody here? And we're all close to it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, we, we did not even talk to anybody. When we go down Cloverdale and anywhere in the area, no one's ever known or heard about it. In ninety-seven, my family, my husband's not here tonight because he is fighting cancer and he is penny. But he couldn't attend, so I'm here on behalf and so is my son-in-law. In ninety-seven, we moved to Virginia because we wanted to get away from the rat race in New Jersey, wanted to raise our kids safe, right? Fifteen years ago, we moved to Savannah and it's home. We're a newbie compared to my neighbors. My neighbors have been there a lot longer. When we first moved in on Cloverdale, it was in the middle of an ice storm and neighbors rallied around us. Couldn't even get into our house because we're deep down in a slope. We don't obviously see each other, but we know we're there. We have a rich group of people everywhere from elderly, elderly. To people with lots of children. We have children. My grandchildren live there. We have a small road. People now fly through there like crazy. I don't care if it's twelve cars or five cars. People invite people when they're having fun. And yes, it might be just a couple. But who's gonna control who's there? Who's gonna control? I'm worried about the fire. My husband was, is a retired fireman. He's crazy worried about the forest and fires. And when he heard about wood burning, I believe jacuzzis, hot tubs, whatever, he was really upset. The community is concerned. This is all I'm going to say, cause like I said, after fifteen years, I'm a newbie. But no one on this street or anywhere around has ever treated me anything less than somebody that's been there thirty-five years. So I'm going to step aside. I believe there's people that are. Been there longer than me that can speak for themselves. There, we're all here. And I just ask that there's a bit of respect here because we are concerned about what will be coming through the woods. Who's gonna control what? And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I can't read the first name, but the last name is Will.
John.
Hey, I had her right. If I wrote it, it'd be worse. Would have looked like John U, J O N U, man. Mine would have seen J and that's it. Um, so my name's Jonathan Wills. Um, I reside with my mother-in-law. Thirty-two thirty-five Cloverdale Road. Um, she's had a couple more years of me there. I met my wonderful wife thirteen years ago. We've had fun back and forth, but during this time, I was able to raise six kids in this county. I used to own video by the lake, Lake Monticello. So when it comes to businesses, I will tell you, I support a local business one hundred percent. At this time, my eighteen-year-old son came to me and wanted the dream of having a restaurant. You worked at Red Dead Crescent Inn? He was all for that position and all for that opportunity. I went with him. I still work at G F L Environmental. I pull ninety-two hours a week. If no one believes me, I will show you my time card and I will show you and you can ask my wife how many times I walk in at one o'clock and then I get up at six and go to work. I do what to take care of my family. With that being said. I support a local business. I also support them where it's at. This location is not safe at all for this. The reason I say that, Morgan spoke up and said the same thing with the traffic. Walking up and down the road with my three little kids, three older ones are out of the house now. Sometimes I'm happy and a lot of times I'm sad about that, but my three little ones, I go for walks all the time. We throw the ball back and forth as we do this. The people that live on that road are courtesy. Courtesy, one of those words, I'm sorry. And slow down. My children, of course, noticed up on the side of the road. Ten units, twelve units, doesn't matter. Where are these people from? Do they know these roads? Do they know where they're going? Are they looking at the GPS to figure out how to get to Fort Union to go to Sal's? Where do they get groceries from? They're gonna drive all the way to Fork Union? Do they want to go and see sites while they're here? Okay, let's drive forty-five minutes to Charlotteville, to Monticello. Or go to Scottsville to go down the James. This is a great idea. I love your idea, but not in this community. It's not safe. Now, I will bring up Mr. Wilson, that some of the stuff you talked up here was a little stretched. You said you came by and talked to everybody in the area. I work, as I just told you. My mother-in-law is at home with my wife and kids. They received your letter in the mail, stuck in the mailbox, not an envelope, not stamped, honestly against federal law. So if you step to that ground just to do that, what other possibilities can change? As you stated, your idea is not to take away the canopy. Or the front. Your plan. Your aim and attention, but once get approved, that can totally change. Your signage, your access. The wood that we talked about. Who's gonna be there to watch these guests? Okay, if I'm right, and by your information, you're in Herriko County. Who's gonna be there to watch these guests? To follow the ten P M policy of noise? To make sure they don't start a fire and burn down your built place and our beautiful homes and property. Do you have a creek bed there? You advertise hiking. No plan shows hiking. Your new plan that you just put in, if you go back and look at it and pull it up, shows you changed it, but you still left one extra on there. So with the letter coming through the mail you did, was that one extra on there just because? Or was it slid in there to hopefully get approved? I don't know. I don't know you, you don't know these people because you never came to meet us. As I stated, I worked for G F L Environmental, I still do. You guys have probably seen the construction up there and the pavement we did. Year and a half, two years, we went through this project to get approved. To do what we need to up there. Every six months, we were up at the best question with. Questions answered. We had several. Couple hundred people show up the first time, less than X, less than X, because we answered their questions. You were hesitant. You said that you wanted to talk to the community, but when you were asked to hold off and do a community meeting, you were hesitant. Then you changed your mind because the community or part of the community isn't here. There's still more, because your letter only made it. I'm sorry, his letter only made it to our house. My mother-in-law went further. Other neighbors went further. Nobody knew about this. We all know in that area, the internet's not that good, so let's tell them to go on the internet. Firefly come, believe me. I have it at my restaurant. I have it at mine. Thank you. I guess it's time. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person is Rod Understall.
Thanks for the opportunity to uh, come. I think.
Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Ron Understall. I live on five seven eight Middle Farms Trace, just down the road in Brimwood Bluff. I'm a retired businessman. And currently teach at U V A and uh, moved, I'm a city boy that moved here. Uh, married a Savannah girl and her family's been here for hundreds of years. I've only been here since twenty nineteen. So I'm a new person who appreciates living in this community and I've learned to. Hike and fish and hunt and board for mushrooms and garden and all the things that make this community wonderful. Uh, I have four points I'd like to make. First of all, um, trash management is gonna be a concern for this uh, business because. Uh, if you don't really police the trash, two things are gonna happen. You're gonna get a lot of rodents. You're gonna get a lot of raccoons, you're gonna get a lot of pests, and more importantly, you're gonna get a lot of bears, black bears are gonna be conditioned to food. And we all know that when black bears get conditioned to food, they become dangerous and this has been a big problem in our community, even on my property at times. So that's the first point. Second point is, this is not a very good location. In fact, I would consider it a bad location. It's a swampland. It's next to the creeks, it floods, it's gonna be mosquito infested, there's gonna be flooding concerns. The geodesic domes, I haven't been able to find information, but it's gonna be very unpleasant on a summer day. Camping in a ge- geodesic dome without air conditioning, so uh, it could be okay in the winter time, but that means uh, campfires. So I just, I think mosquitoes, the flooding risk, um, the desirability of the location because. Of the lack of air conditioning in the summertime and also the distance to amenities like Lake Monticello. New Canton Boat Wrap, Scottsville, and any access to hiking is gonna be uh, problematic. The third point, and I think this is the biggest point I wanna make, I just don't see the business plan being viable. It's a pretty significant investment. Uh, you've gotta have staff there locally that are gonna be able to respond to customer needs. And um, I just don't see there, how you gonna make any money doing this? You're dependent, according to the business plan, you're dependent on locally sourced experiences. Those locally sourced experiences are gonna be pretty significantly far from Savannah County, so people are gonna come and then they drive thirty-five, forty minutes. Uh, significant partnerships are gonna be needed and most of around this, in Savannah County, in this area is all private property. So that means you gotta come to me and say, hey, would it be okay if my guest walked on your property? Ain't gonna happen with me. The fourth point is safety and environment. Um, I am concerned about how much wood's gonna be imported into the community. We all know that when you bring in. The wrong wood, you can bring in diseases and insects and we all see what happened to the ash trees. That's a real threat. And we could decimate certain types of tree populations. Um, the, the, I think the thing that's really been already mentioned, but I wanna emphasize it. I teach safety uh, for engineers at the university, so I have something to say about this. Fire safety management by guests is very problematic. You've got people who are on commitment camping, they're gonna be very. Undisciplined about fire safety, ash management, things of this nature, and then this close to this of, you know, having a big fire, what are you gonna do about it? Um, this is certainly too close to the communities. I've got a good friend of mine, hunting buddy, he's just up the street and this, it's just in their back door. Uh, and you know, I, I, I recognize the traffic issue in Savannah, I think that makes a lot of sense, but the fire, the safety environmental issues are a real concern. In summary, I just wanna say, we need net more economic development in this county and I'm all for it. We need more restaurants. I'd love to see the drive-in reopened. I think this county would be with better served, redirecting its, its energy into those types of projects. This project could work, but not at this location. It's just a bad location for the, the comments that I report, points I made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Tammy Stow. Please go forward, state your name and address. You have a limited five minutes.
My name is Tammy Castle Stow and my address is two nine nine three Cloverdale Road. And thanks for giving me the opportunity to share uh, my family's opinion of what's gonna be, what the proposed project is. And our family owns the property directly up, across from the proposed Camp Yellow Corner LLC, directly across from it. Here's that, we're right here. And we have had that property for over forty years. And we also own other property that's connected to that. And the reason why we chose this because. Our family was from York County and Richmond is because of the rural setting and the space to enjoy nature. Um, we are opposed to approving a special use permit for the campground. Occupancy beyond what it normally would be done, like architectural. Agriculture rule and designated use there. It's, it's single-family home kind of concept there. Um, and we don't believe that the proposal is in line with the fabric of our community and rural lifestyle. Cloverdale Road and Brimwood Road to Fork Union is all residential houses except for one church, historical church. We strongly feel that the campground venture is in stark contrast to Cloverdale Road community. And we would like to address to the board just a couple of our concerns and I think everybody else has pretty much said this. Uh, the visibility, um. That lot, that, that, the campground that's proposed is either way up here or way down here. It's not level with the road. So even during the winter months, and he's proposing a fifty-foot barrier. We're going to see these geo dorms, we're gonna see the whole concept. There's just no way you're gonna be able to hide that. It's only a thirteen-acre lot there. So we think that the canopy is not gonna cover even during the winter months of what. But without being able to see the campground. It's gonna be visible from the road. Uh, on the noise aspect of it, I mean, no matter what it is, a campground is a hospitality business. And um, per Mr. Wilson's comment, I got from him that it's normally gonna be a two-day rental. It's gonna be couple, couples only. And um, you, there's no way to say you're not gonna have increased traffic noise. It's, you're definitely gonna have that. Um, and Mr. Wilson also states that, and this was a real big concern that I had. There's, when he said he first gonna start the project, there's not, not gonna be twenty-four seven staff. So he has a curfew between ten to seventy, saying, well, how do you monitor? Because I know how it is. I've been there. Go to campground, you got, you having fun, you got a campfire going. Uh, it doesn't shut down at ten o'clock. So if he doesn't have a twenty-four seven staff, his solution to monitoring noise levels and stuff is through technology. It's not gonna be anybody on the premises from what I gather. So that's just one point that we wanted to make on that. How do you monitor that? Um, and as everybody knows, sound, sound does carry. I can hear my neighbors' cows way down the road. I can't imagine what I'm gonna hear from a campground. Um. And I don't even know if pets are allowed. That's another thing. Our pet's gonna be allowed. I'm just kind of addressing that. Um. And so going back to. And so going back to that concept of. I'm going to monitor that through technology. I don't know how you can expect campers to police themselves. Especially when there's alcohol involved. Just a footnote to that. The site plan does outline. All the fire apparatuses that are going to be on the property. If I count everyone, there are thirty-one. Active. Fire apparatuses on that, including the, he's going to have a communal. Pavilion fire pit. So that's possible, thirty-one cars burning all at. Active at the same time. And what's that going to do? That's going to cause smoke. That's a smoke pollution I'm going to, that our. Neighbors are going to have to be worrying about. And surrounding farmland, right across the street has been a farm there. For I don't know how long, if that, those embers travel, it's just going to, you know, you're going to have damage to. Farmland, residential housing and the other. So I'd just like to conclude that we are not. Supporting this and we think it's a cool concept, but as everybody else states. It's just not the right location for.
Thank you.
What he's doing. Thank you very much.
The next person on the list is Wayne Griffin.
My name's Wayne Griffin. I live at thirty-four seventy-four Cloverdale Road. I'm lot twenty-three and lot twenty-four. Adjacent to lot twenty-five. If you're looking at the papers that I just gave you. The first one is. His declaration. Of his deed. And if you. Turn to the fourth page. That's the declaration of. Subvenance. For South Creek Farms. So if you continue on. To number three that we got highlighted. It says, no building of a temporary nature shall be erected or placed on any lot. Except those customarily erected in connection with building operation. Number four. Not more than one resident shall be, residents shall be erected on any one lot unless specifically approved. If you turn the page to number five. Here's the kicker. All lots except as here and after provided shall be used for residential purposes only. Not a campground. Any. Going down to number six. No signs, no billboards or advertising of any nature shall be erected. Placed or maintained on this property. Nor upon any building erected their own. And number twelve. If you read that, you can figure it out. But. The biggest problem I've got. Is lot twenty-four. We bought that. For. Our grandkids. I've got ten grandkids. And we ride bicycles through that. Property. I've got paths through there. That is so they can get out of the house and enjoy nature. How many times have you ever told your kids, get out of the house? Get off the TV, get off the video games. I spent good money to buy that lot two years ago so we can do that. They bring a campground in. I don't know what pedophiles coming in. I don't know the type of people coming in or anything such as that. On top of that, if you look at the. Extra paper that I put in the back. That is a topographical map. There is a seventy-foot grade difference between the creek and the top of the hill. How are you planning on putting twenty-foot? Twenty-three foot, twenty-eight foot platforms on that safely? Because you're going to. You know, if you drank any amount of beer. It ain't going to be pretty. But.
People in Elliot, we need to be quiet so we can hear the. Thank you.
Now. I'm not against camping. We go all the time. But this is just not the, the place for it. You know. She was talking about the traffic. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of traffic. And you know. If. You look at the. Petition that I give her. It's. Pretty damn near filled up with Cloverdale Road. And nobody wants it. Nobody knew about it. When I went around. Everybody was floored. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You want to get those back because of the personal information and the signature on it? Unless you need to look at them until the end of the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person on the list is Kenny Wilczynski.
Need the petition?
No, that's for y'all.
Thank you.
What's that?
For the minutes.
Okay.
My name's Kenny Wilczynski. I live at thirty-one fifty-six Cloverdale Road. And Wayne came up to me not too long ago, just to let me know what was going on regarding this. And I was one of them ones that were floored. South Creek is a rural. Residential community where there's young children. Older people that are walking around on that road. It is just no place for number one, the traffic. And the people going. And coming from that area, we're going to have trash. From that area, probably all the way to West Bottom, from where people are just going to throw stuff out the window. That's, that's enough for you. During hunting season. Which has not really been addressed here today. We're going to have people that are going to be in them yurts. That are going to be looking to step off of that property to do some illegal hunting. There is no public. Paths. Nothing. It's just the thirteen acres. After that, they're going to come off of that property. South Creek is right there. Several of our properties back up. To South Creek. They come off of that property. They're going to go up South Creek and they're going to be trespassing on several. Properties all up through that subdivision. And we're not, I'm not happy about that because you know, that was a problem in the past for us. It's not anymore, but I don't want it to be a new problem. My other issue with that is. There's no vetting of the people that. Are going to be running these. That was mentioned before, you don't have any idea who they could be from Maine, it could be from Washington State, you don't know their backgrounds. Wayne has his little grandchildren.
Look at us when you talk.
Wayne has his. Wayne has his grandchildren up and back. Jen has his grand, her, her children right there on the road. We, the, the nervousness of not knowing. Who will be there is, is very upsetting. So I'm, I'm just saying that me and my wife, Mary, we are not at all. Supporting this. We'd rather. Not go through. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the. List is Sean Soft. Probably didn't get his name right.
No, that's correct. Kind of aware of it. My name is Sean Soft. I reside at two six five South Creek Lane, Brema Bluff. I'm nervous. This seems big. And I understand it's a big intention. I understand it's a big, I'm working on it. It's a big intention what Mr. and Mrs. Wilson are putting together here. I just found out about it this Saturday. And I think this is the letter we're talking about. I'd like to read for the record here. Now I've got about four minutes left, just the letter. Dear neighbor. I hope this letter finds you well. My wife and I reaching out today to introduce ourselves as future neighbors. And the owners of Camp Yellow Cardinal proposed, proposed upscale campground on the thirteen acre site located southwest of the intersection of Cloverdale Road. And Brema Road. We wanted to personally inform you about our plans. And seek your support as we embark on this exciting project. Our vision for Camp Yellow Cardinal is to create a serene outdoor experience that respects and preserves the natural beauty. And character of our neighborhood. To this end, we will limit the number of camping sites to no more than fifteen, apparently now ten. Which will help us manage both the environmental impact and flow of traffic in the area. We believe this modest scale will allow us to offer an intimate and exclusive experience for our guests while keeping the surrounding neighborhood. Peaceful and quiet. Additionally, we are committed to maintaining the integrity of the land and will ensure that the majority of trees on the property remain undisturbed. We understand and deeply respect the importance of maintaining a tranquil environment. For all residents. To minimize any potential disruptions, we will enforce quiet hours starting at ten PM each night. Additionally, all parking facilities and campsites will be tucked away on the property, preserving the existing tree line and natural buffers at all edges of the property. I'm halfway there. Our goal is to be a positive addition to the community. Well, there's another one I forgot. Contributing to the unique and welcoming character of our neighborhood. We believe that Camp Yellow Cardinal can provide economic benefits such as increased patronage to local businesses. While also fostering a greater appreciation for our beautiful surroundings. In the coming weeks, you may receive an official letter from the county describing our interest in obtaining a special use zoning permit to move forward with this project. We wanted to reach out to you directly in advance. Of that, so that you had a chance to learn directly from us. We're eager to hear your thoughts and address any concerns. You might have. Your feedback is invaluable to us. As we move forward with our plans, please feel free to contact me directly if you would like. To discuss this project further or if you have any questions. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to becoming a part of this wonderful community. And hope to earn your support for Camp Yellow Cardinal. One regards Kevin Wilson, Laura Wilson. Got about less than two minutes left. Eight times neighbor, community neighbors have been mentioned. We live there. I'm forty-one years old. I have a two-year-old daughter, I'm a very old father. First time, we're going to try for a second. I lived there. This is very clearly a commercial endeavor. About little less than two years ago, I went for my own commercial endeavor. I worked from home, a. Home-based vocation, I think is what it's called, home-based business. An FFL, and I was limited by planning to strictly, for a federal firearms license. To strictly be doing, or more generally strictly be doing. Online sales only. Even a kitchen table FFL transfer would be looked down upon, I believe, by planning. It will be looked down upon by me because I can't limit the effect on my nearest neighbors on our private land. That's a commercial intent. That's a commercial business. And I don't want to do it because I live there. This is my own business. This is what I pay for. Our children grow up here, our animals and livestock are exposed, our waterways make us accessible. My neighbor immediately adjacent to us has four elementary school aged children, one of whom is disabled. That's why they couldn't make it to speak. They checked sex offender registry before moving here. And that's another concern we have is how do you vet the people who are patronizing your business, your campsite? Because we're not being asked to vet. May twenty-first was when this letter went out and I didn't find out about it till Saturday. I'm nervous. Because this is big, it seems important. And I understand what it means to be. Trying to start a business, to support your family, to do what you need to do for you. And yours, your loved ones. I get that. But they won't live there. Like we do. And that's a big issue because we get to deal with the traffic, we get to deal with the fire risk, we get to deal with the unvetted patronage. And I don't know how we will deal with that without your help and your consideration and efforts. I think I'll turn over my time. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Feel that maybe I got to get going. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Next person is Tom Gable.
Hello, my name is Tom Gable. I live at thirty-three cloverdale road. And I got a letter to mail as well and I agree with everybody here. I'm not going to say a whole lot, but because I wasn't really prepared to speak. But I definitely disagree with what's going on down there. I don't think it's a good thing for the community. And I am concerned about the traffic. You know, when you go to a campsite. You're going to have people invite other people over. Like four, five friends come over, come over down to the campsite. Let's all have a party down there. And you know, and you've got fifteen, ten, fifteen campsites, you might have ten or fifteen people at each campsite. At any given time. So that's going to be a lot of traffic, more than you think, back and forth. So for that reason and other reasons, fire reasons and things of that nature. I'm really opposed to this thing and I don't think it should be in that area. Good thing to have, but not in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next person is Richard Eaton.
I'm coming as fast as I can go. I'm Richard Eaton. Three, three, nine, one Cloverdale Road. I live Catty Warner. brought from Mrs. Griffiths back there. And. Next to him is supposedly going to be a piece of property that's going to become a campground. And it's going to be called Camp Yellow Cardinal. Well. First of all. I don't know what you guys do when it comes to VDOT, but somebody better talk to VDOT. Because you better do something with six fifty-four and six fifty-six. Because people are going to be tromping around out there in the vehicles and trying to run over everybody on that darn corner. And the, the, the next thing that really concerns me. I thought we're supposed to be concerned about wetlands and conserving property and everything. They're talking about sticking a bunch of little. Geodesic domes, whatever. Down there along North Creek. Well, folks. Nine years ago, that property. Was under eight feet of water. Every year, it's under two or three feet of water. At some point in the day. I mean, you start, start in December and go through. Then your following year. And three or four times, that's going to be underwater. That's not. Maybe, or sometimes, that is, I've lived there. Now, I'm a newcomer. You know, and I've only lived there for, I've owned that property for thirty-six years now. And had a home there for the last twenty-six. So yeah, I can see all that water down there. You better give your folks oars for those little geodesic. How are they going to handle? Their sewage? And trash? You're not going to. You're, you're going to have some really, really special. Waste management. Operations going on down there. I mean, I've seen some. You know, and so you're going to have to build tanks and you're going to have to build pumps. And you're going to have to have somebody go down there and pump that thing out every, probably every two or three weeks. In order to keep up with the folks that are living there. And that's pretty much. Now, my wife picked me on my way up here and she said, you know, nobody yet has addressed. The difficulty in getting emergency. Vehicles and medicals help. Over to that particular site. It's going to have to come. Can't come from Fork Union anymore because. We don't have an emergency squad there anymore, so it's going to come. From where? Going to come out of Palmyra, going to come from the lake, going to come. From Kent Store. Well, I don't care where any of those things, what, what, where it comes from. But if you've got a medical emergency, you're talking about a thirty or forty minute delay at some point in time. But if you've got a medical emergency, you're talking about a thirty or forty-minute delay at some point in time in order to get help to that site. Really not a good plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Get their dress water.
Yeah, well, that's uh, we dressed all the water that they don't need.
The next person is Anthony De Yerle. Anthony D E Y E R L E, it looks like. Okay, that's the last person I have on the list.
That was Mr. De Yerle that first spoke in the first round of public comments.
Alrighty, uh anyone else wishing to speak? Uh I know we've heard a lot already. Uh anyone wish to come forward, come forward, state your name and address. You'll limit it in five minutes.
My name is Nadine Armstrong, and I live at two-nine-seven-nine Brimmo Road, Brimmo, Virginia. And hello. I'm here tonight just to uh make a few comments in reference to this situation. I didn't know about it until last week. I happened to look at the rural Virginia, and I noticed this public hearing notice. And when I looked at it, I was very confused at first because I said, well, Cloverdale Road on Route six fifty-six. Now we've got Brimmo Road. But not Cloverdale Road. So I was very confused as to where this place is located. So I think I called Ms. Loretta here, and she didn't know where it was either. So uh I actually went there today and took a look at it. And I'm thinking to myself, a campground. And I was kind of surprised because I noticed that they had already started clearing the property to put the uh camp there. And I wondered, now, I have a lot of relatives in Cloverdale. And I know someone would have contacted me in reference to this had they known. And I haven't heard a word from any of them. And when I contacted Ms. Loretta, she said she didn't know anything at the time about it, so I said, well, they're having this public hearing, so maybe I ought to go over here and see what's going on. So I'm sitting here tonight listening, and I hear all of these people coming in tonight and discussing this. But I noticed that a lot of the citizens that were born and raised in Cloverdale are not here tonight. And that really concerns me. Because to me, that says either they didn't know about it or they weren't interested in it. And I know better than that. So my my opinion is obviously that they didn't know about it. And I'm glad that you came up with the fact that there need to be a community meeting. Because that's the main thing that you need to do when you have a situation like this. That should have been one of the first things that was brought up. A community meeting. So that the citizens have the opportunity to express their opinions about what's going on in their community. I've had this situation happen, so I'm very familiar with how it can go. So that's the only thing I really wanted to say in reference to this because that was gonna be one of my main questions. Has there been a notice of a community meeting? So you guys have actually already answered that question. And I definitely plan to be at it when you do have it. And in order to get that notice, I I think that the people, some of the, some of the homes need to be you need to go to some of their homes and let them spread the word, especially in the church. Announce it in the church. And even go to some of the homes. So that the word can get around to the community. And if there's anything I can do to assist, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a pleasant evening.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
I'm Polly Eaton, thirty-three ninety-one Cloverdale, so we're kinda at a corner across from where this is gonna be. And the one thing that I have not heard that really concerns me is how many wells are they gonna have? And how is it going to affect our groundwater? Fork Union's water supply does not come down that far. And honestly, nor do I want it because I love my well. But I don't want it going dry when, I don't, like I say, I haven't heard anything about how many wells they propose and how much water they plan on siphoning out of our groundwater. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward uh to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be limited in five minutes.
My name is Rhonda Griffin. I live at three-four-seven-four Cloverdale Road. And it's gonna be really quick. I just wanted to clarify. Lot twenty-five is part of the South Creek Farms subdivision there. I haven't really heard that come up as much as I thought it would. Um the papers my husband had put out earlier is the Declaration of Protective Covenants for South Creek Farms, and that's what all those things were. So I know that I just got that copy from the courthouse. So I just wanted to make sure that was understood, that they are part of the subdivision. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be limited in five minutes.
I don't need that long. I just wanna say I'm I'm on board with everybody else in the the community. I'm Roger Davis, uh three-one-five-nine Cloverdale Road. Now I live down in Cloverdale to to be left behind from the world. Uh I work seventy hours a week. Uh I keep it to myself. I raise my kids, enjoy time with my wife, and I just don't want extra people around. Pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any anyone else wish to come forward and speak? Heard a lot already. Anybody want to say anything else? Please come forward, state your name and address. You're limited in five minutes. Seeing no one else coming forward, we will end the public comment section at this time.
Uh Mr. Chair, just real quick, we did receive some comments from individuals who are in the crowd, and Mr. Eaton, Mr. Griffin, and Mrs. Stoff. It it sounds like your comments she sent us were addressed during your public hearing comments.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We didn't get no response to them, but we addressed it.
Hey, this time I'll open it up to discussion of the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, we need to let the applicant have time to speak, to address any comments.
Alrighty. Would you like to?
Sure.
Do you like to comment?
Folks, I just wanna say, uh, commission and and everybody that's here. Um, I appreciate you. I was sitting here taking notes on everything that was discussed. Um and I think that uh I guess the thing that I'd like to say is that I apologize that if there's any sense that we have been trying to avoid talking with the community or trying to dodge anybody. I've I've asked um, you know, members that that work for the county to share my cellphone and and email address, and in in those letters, I included that. I didn't mean for those letters to come across as me shoving something in a in a mailbox or anyway, trying to avoid people. I really uh, I welcome all the discussion um that comes from this, and I really do look forward to um to setting up a community meeting where we can have a conversation face to face. Um some of this perhaps not so formal as standing at a podium like this. There, I I did hear just one thing that I did want to mention. When we purchased the property, the driveway in the area um was already cleared. We haven't started any work on there. There's nothing about this that we're trying to to bulldoze in there and just like start this process. We are in every way, shape, and form, trying to conform to the uh, you know, the the letter of the law and sort of what um, you know, Louana County has has guided us in doing here. I don't know that I necessarily want to go, you know, through every single one of these points um right here, right now. Um, because I think that it'd be great that if if, like I said, we have a community meeting and we can discuss these openly, um I can put together some uh some information and 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 share that with everyone. Um because, yeah, at the end of the day, I want this to be a a good faith process, and I do want everybody's input. And um, so yeah, that's that's, I think, what I'll I'll limit my comment to right now. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Yeah, this time uh I will open the discussion with the planning commission. Uh I've been listening to a lot of this stuff here myself. I have some major concerns. And I think that I really have some real problems.
I do, too. I just look at this petition. Um I have a few people that are on here that I know of that live off of Cloverdale Road who has signed this petition. Um wow.
Will that go into the meds?
Yeah, so um I'm looking at this petition and protest and all the people that are on here. Um, I would like to hear for from a few more people on the West Bottom side. Because that's the other part of this is Cloverdale Road and um Brimmo Road that leads to West Bottom. Um I would like to hear from them also. Um because I do have some concerns, some real concerns and issues now. Um in addition to the other concerns I had earlier, um traffic, traffic pattern, but after listening to everybody, I I just have some serious questions, so.
I do as well. I think um not, not, you know, counting uh the petition, which I haven't seen, but just the testimony indicates some very significant questions that need to be resolved if they're resolvable. Um, I too own property that uh several times a year ends up underwater. And I wouldn't think of putting people or livestock, frankly, on that lake. And that's a concern. Um, it's as well of the issues of waste management, of security, when you open up a piece of property, especially cheap by chow with the community um to uh online or digital monitoring thirty miles away. That's a problem. It really is. That's the health and safety issue that that would concern me. I think that I appreciate uh the owner's response to wanting to have a community meeting uh at the same time. There's some really significant issues here for health and safety. And has staff reviewed this? Is there a recommendation? Have we looked into these kinds of issues? Um, that bear on the responsibility uh of moving forward uh with this kind of proposal at this time?
Yeah, I I I do. I'll start with my my favorite subject, public safety. Definitely, one of the questions is that being on a creek, what what do we know if this is in the flood plain? Uh what what's the flash flooding history down here? You know, all that type of stuff needs to be looked at. And then when you start getting into uh the waste management, the human waste management as as well as the trash, how how is that gonna happen? And then uh the the other part is during staff's review, uh did they know about this deed? Uh if if the restricted covenants exist, I don't see how this project can move forward legally. So that that, tho- those are definitely three, three big concerns.
And I like to adjust the concerns. Um, I personally know about when bad weather hits that area. Trees go down, snow gets on the ground. And unfortunately, they're one of the last areas to get cleared. And it's just as simple as that. I mean, it's a back road. VDOT, yeah, yeah, first to lose power. They don't get their uh roads clear. They're kind of um stuck. But also, I'm looking at this um petition and um in addition to Cloverdale Road, we gotta look at Deer Lane, which is connecting to Cloverdale Road, um which is another part of Cloverdale, um that this is also going to affect. And I saw one person on here from Deer Lane, um who was uh against this, but I would like to hear from that part of Cloverdale, too, because Cloverdale is not just Cloverdale Road. Um, so I would like to see that, too. Uh I have some major concerns. I mean, it's a good idea, but I'm not sure that's the correct place to put it. Um, there might be somewhere else in the county that this can go, that's more suitable. Um so that's what I think. But again, I won't make my decision on anything until I hear from the residents that live down the additional residents on Cloverdale Road and Brimmo Road leading to West Bottom. So and then even Brimmo Road, the residents that live on Brimmo Road leading to Route Six. I mean, they use that road a lot, too. So I would like to hear from them, too, not just Cloverdale Road, what their concerns are. And then we're working on the water line down there also, and how does that affect that from Brimmo that's coming up that road?
Right in Brown tomorrow?
Yes, so we gotta take that in consideration, too. I mean, that's already putting additional strain on traffic in that area. I've been there. I had to stop at the little portable stoplights that let you up and down. Yeah. Yeah, um, it's um held up traffic and, you know, it was a pain in the butt because it was a shortcut for me, and I didn't want to go all the way through Fork Union because I was down in Columbia. So there's a lot of things we need to take in consideration before looking at this any further.
I I don't want to be a dead or I think all four or all five, Eddie, did you have something you wanted to?
No, I I agree on all points, and and someone who's run medical calls down there on that road. Um, it's, I I just don't see it as a as a safe, safe place. I said, I, I think it's a great concept. I just don't think it's the right location. And I said, after running calls down there and you know, the amount of traffic down through there and things like that that comes through, they're like the track meets and that sort of stuff. It's it's just not safe.
Yeah, and 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 I I I'll piggyback on some of that with some of the EMS stuff. Another thing we didn't take into account with traffic is is employees. I mean, you're gonna have to have employees there that are gonna, that's gonna add traffic that's gonna be coming down the road each and every day. And if you have the amount of employees that we, that that one would need to address some of the concerns that we heard tonight, that that means you're gonna have additional traffic, hopefully, you know, what would be at all times of the day conceivably. Um you know, uh another thing I I heard mentioned about EMS, fire and EMS, that didn't come up a ton, but you know, we're we're already, uh, we do have, um, I want to point out that we do have uh some some uh paid folks, paid EMS folks that are stationed at the Fork Union Firehouse as far as, as far as I I recall. But regardless, we're 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 already pressured with 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 response times here in the county, no matter where you are. And when you add something like this on top of that, where you could potentially be putting stress on on fire and EMS resources, that takes it away from the people that that are in the county that may need those things. Um, and that's something that we discussed at at a bigger project out in the Scottsville area. I can't remember which that one was called. Uh maybe I've removed it from my head at this point. Um a a question I had, too, would be, does does the RV issue addressed in the, is that addressed in the condition? But I I think that's a moot point at this point. I mean, I think we heard loud and clear tonight from people in that area. Um, I don't know how much smaller this can get um to to and 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 I don't, I don't know how much can be done to uh address all of those concerns with 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 making this still a profitable venture for someone. So you know, I I know that there was um some talks of of a community meeting, and that's 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 greatly appreciated. I was I will say for the applicant, there was a couple of times that uh, you know, he, there were people that wanted to speak with them. He reached out directly to them. I was a little bit concerned about the apprehension at first on wanting to have the community meeting and saying, well, I would just prefer a prefer a prefer an approval. That did concern me a little bit there. Um, but but realistically, I, you know, we discussed uh you all make the decision you make, but I mean, I think it's, people spoke loud and clear this evening and night.
No, I think this, you know, this petition speaks a lot about a community meeting.
Um, with the flooding and all like that, it's
Yeah. I mean, yeah, the community meeting was a good idea before I saw the petition, but it looks like eighty percent, well, ninety percent of the community have already made their decision on this protest. Uh, so um I don't know right now if a community meeting would really matter because they pretty much have already said they're they're against it, so. And that's the majority of Cloverdale where everybody uses Cloverdale Road, you know, it's not even including West Bottom, but the main people on Cloverdale Road, so. I'm sorry.
No. I think the the nature of the questions go way beyond beyond the normal. go way beyond, beyond the normal. Not next to us. There are real and substantial issues here that reach to the heart of whether this is a viable and your, and your appropriate location.
Any more, any more comments from the planning commission? Hey, at this time, uh, do I have a motion?
I moved that we recommend denial of S U P twenty-four oh-three. Uh, a request to permit the campground and accessory use suits with respect to a thirteen point one seven three plus or minus acres of tax map sixty, section eight, parcel twenty-five, with the conditions as described in the South Florida.
I have a motion by this, go Patrick, to deny this. Uh, do I have a second? I have a second by Miss Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, denied five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a five minute recess to allow people to.
Let's, uh, we'll, I'm gonna call a five minute recess to let the area clear out and get something at noise level if I do.
What is that? The idea that we didn't reach out to the right people. Look for guidance. We believe this was.
Thank you all for your time.
They had already cleared, start clearing off the property.
No.
If you want to.
As everyone's finished their five minute recess, we reopen the meeting at eight fifty-three. The next item is an action matter on the solar. Mr. Witten and Mr. Fortune.
And what you have before you is a resolution. Uh, this is basically to authorize us to advertise for a public hearing. This is the, the changes to the ordinance to the solar that were discussed during the work session. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to read the ordinance aloud?
Do you think we need to?
Uh, I'll go ahead and read aloud. Uh, whereas regulations established in chapter twenty-two of the Levana County Code, zoning code may from time to time be amended, supplemented, changed, modified, or repealed by the governing body pursuant to section fifteen point two dash two-two-eight-five of the Code of Virginia. And whereas in accordance with section twenty-two dash twenty dash one of the zoning code, the Levana County Planning Commission can adopt a resolution of intention to propose an amendment to the zoning code. And whereas the planning commission desires to propose amendments to the zoning code by amending section twenty-two dash two dash one and enacting section twenty-two dash three dash one through twenty-two dash three dash five point four and enacting section twenty-two dash eight dash one through twenty-two dash twenty-eight dash twenty-five to create a zor- solar zoning district and to add supplemental regulations for solar generation facilities. And whereas the planning commission finds that the purpose of the proposed zoning code amendments is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, fair and good zoning practice. And whereas the planning commission shall hold a public hearing on such proposed amendments after notice as required by section fifteen point two dash two-two-zero-four of the Code of Virginia and may make appropriate changes and propose amendment as a result of such hearing. Now therefore be resolved, the planning commission proposes amendments to the zoning code by amending section twenty-two dash two dash one and acting section twenty-two dash three dash one through twenty-two dash three dash five point four and enacting section twenty-two dash eight dash one through twenty-two dash twenty-eight dash twenty-five to create a solar zoning district and to add supplemental regulations for utility scale solar generation facilities. And foreboding resolution duly and regularly adopted by the Levana County Planning Commission at a meeting of the commission held on the thirteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-four. So we're just asking for a, a motion to approve that resolution, which will allow us to advertise this for a public hearing.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
If, uh, we're talking about a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
When are we talking about the public hearing?
It will be in September.
Is there a way from some of the comments that we could possibly say October?
That's really up to the commission.
Actually, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have a deadline by the Board of Supervisors. We have to have a regulation by September twentieth.
That's correct. Yeah, thank you for reminding me.
I forgot to add that.
I think that in view of the comments that we received, uh, that it would be appropriate for the solar committee to sit down one more time and uh, consider what we've heard. I, I'm a little discomforted by the idea that we are kind of telling people to go out and have community meetings. And um, not actually hearing what, or, or being in a position to respond to some of the concepts that came before us before. And that maybe we can do that and Mr. Witten can say that and can say whether that's the case. But before we have a hearing, I do believe that we should just at least come together, the four of us who are on the commission, review what we've heard through the public comment session in the beginning and uh, make or not make such adjustments as we think are appropriate and necessary.
I personally feel that we have gotten to this point and we keep hearing people every time we meet and then we're going back and forth to the solar committee. And if we continue going at that rate, we're gonna never get anything done. Because every time we have something, somebody else comes there with something else. Uh, I personally think that we should move forward and send this to the Board of Supervisors and have them look at it. And, cause I'm pretty sure these same people are gonna make these same comments at the Board of Supervisors meeting. And then let the Board of Supervisors decide whether we need to come back to the table.
Well, there's recommendations, there's just the first hour of public hearing next month. That, that will go to the Board of Supervisors at the lap of that.
But we have been meeting how many times now? Right, but we've, I've already heard everything before that these people have said that I don't see that there's anything difference in changing anything. What we've already established. We just keep going back and forth and back and forth in our solo meetings. And it's just pushing it out and pushing it out. That's just my opinion. I don't think my mind would change any. No, my mind wouldn't change any from what, from what I heard tonight, what we've already had discussed and decided upon. I, I don't, I wouldn't change anything. Until I hear back from what the Board of Supervisors says. Because like I said, we can put down what we want on paper, all we want, but initially it goes back to the Board of Supervisors. For their final decision.
But by enacting this resolution, we're just saying that we're, we're gonna advertise a public hearing.
Correct.
Between now and that public hearing, we can make some of those changes if necessary. So i- it doesn't hurt anything to push this resolution forward.
If the solar committee wants to reconvene to go back over again. I don't know if they will, so. But I think we need to at least get this going.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we don't do this. I am suggesting since e- every time I've heard public input, I like to recheck, I like to recalibrate. It's, it's part of the back and forth. And uh, that's all I'm suggesting, not hold this up, but that we come together again and make sure that we're we've hit the sweet spot.
Even if it goes to public hearing, it's passed by us and the Board of Supervisors. If we need to make amendments that are attached, we could get through that, so.
Sure.
Any, any code in the county, we could make changes.
Down the road, yes.
I just wanna be clear on one thing. We discussed the three percent, no one, the one percent, meaning, you know, you can't exceed one percent of that three percent in any single magisterial district. Is that gonna be reflected in what we're, what we're gonna be looking at at the next meeting? I just wanna make sure those, some of those changes, that's a big one for me, right, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think all the changes.
Those changes would be incorporated into the, the, the language.
Yes.
Correct. As long as there was a majority tonight, it was in favor of boarding the advertisement with those changes, you know, for a public hearing. Um, then I can make those changes in the ordinance and that's what would be presented at the public hearing.
Okay, so will the motions being presented, Dan, need to be tweaked a little bit?
Uh, no, because you're not changing, you're not adding any additional sections. You're just changing the language within the section, so that motion will still work fine.
Will you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I moved that the planning commission approved resolution twenty-two forty-four, a resolution of intention to amend the code of the county of Levana, Virginia by amending twenty-two dash two dash one enacting twenty-two dash three dash one through twenty-two dash three dash, was that three or thirty-five, three dash five point four? And then acting twenty-two dash two-eight dash one through twenty-two dash two-eight dash two-five to create a solar zoning district and to add supplemental regulations for utility scale solar generation facilities.
Yeah, that was motion by Mrs. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lago Encino. All in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, five, five zero.
And do we need to say anything about a proposed second meeting? I mean, you made it up with the solar committee.
I think, Dan, you could just probably schedule another meeting if we need to with the committee.
Yeah, I can, I can poll, I can poll the committee members and a majority of the committee wants to meet again. I can talk about the proposed changes and, um, it just didn't need to be, you know, before the planning commission meeting in September.
That's perfect, okay.
Your next, your next is, item is a site development plan, S D P twenty-four oh-six, South Boston Convenience Market.
And this is a site development plan being brought to, to the commission for their acceptance. It is a proposed gas station slash convenience store car wash commercial space on South Boston Road. Uh, the tax map, uh, number eighteen dash eight dash fifty-three. Uh, just for a little bit of background, this property rezoned in two thousand and seven from A one agricultural to B one business. Uh, the proposed development is just under fifty percent of the parcel in question. I'll show you that here in a minute. Uh, the rest of the par- property would be retained for possible future development. Uh, here's your location, uh, in the Lake Monchella area of South Boston Road. Here's the parcel in question. You'll notice the tractor supply store is just to the west and talent country self-storage is just to the east. And here's a sketch plan that's that you're being asked to consider tonight. I'll give you a closer appearance in a minute. This one shows you how much of the parcel is being developed, just under fifty percent or give or take. And, and all, and this proposed sketch plan is for development on the west side of the parcel. And here's a closer up look. Uh, you see the word they're proposing, the convenience store, gas station, with a car wash and then some retail space uh, as well. And you'll notice there is a cemetery uh, just below that. This issue came up with the technical review committee and also uh, spoke with the developer and the owner about this as well. Um, and I'll get to that in just a second, but uh, just some, a few points. The, when the, when the technical review committee reviewed this, V-Dot, uh, was not able to attend the meeting. And they've not yet commented on plans, but so they will need to comment on whether they have any concerns for the site distance on the east entrance. And you'll notice the proposed entrance on the east side is further down South Boston Road. Um, just a few of the things, uh, gas pumps have emergency shut off. They plant a full restaurant for the convenience store. Uh, nothing firm for the commercial space. They have some potential uses. As far as water and sewer, they prefer a private well and septic, but they are in discussions with Aqua or Virginia regarding possibly connecting to the nearby water and sewer systems. Uh, the cemetery I mentioned, the owner and engineer both advised that they do plan to take mitigation measure, measure to protect that area. Uh, they plan to stay ten feet off the planted cemetery to avoid any grading immediately around the cemetery. And they plan to place constructive fencing around the cemetery uh, during construction to minimize or mitigate any disturbance. Uh, the technical review committee comments, uh, I mentioned V-Dot, that was a, a main concern. Uh, the water and sewer connections and then just their plans for erosion and sediment stormwater control. Uh, because this parcel is bounded, it's got commercial development to the west and the east and some residences to the south. So erosion sediment stormwater control was an issue. Recommended conditions for accepting this plan uh, is they, of course, meet all the final site plan requirements, including a limited to parking landscape. Uh, is they, of course, meet all the final site plan requirements, including a limited to parking landscaping and outdoor lighting. Uh, to be submitted in all, all plans for, set aside plans for approval. Um, meeting local erosion sediment control and V D, V D E Q stormwater regulations. And also uh, meeting V dot required regulations as far as the entrances. And we'll take any questions. And I'm not sure if the, the developers here tonight. Looks like they are not, so we'll take them, I'll take any questions.
Is ten feet enough space around that cemetery?
It rather depends on what. Scoping out has been done already, and I kinda had that same question. Um. Did they have somebody walk the land? Has, was their research done? Uh, in the deeds, any reservation rights?
My family owned that land for a long time, but I didn't even know cemetery was there. Mother and her sister's only for a while, my friend's mother owned it for that. Was family land for a long time, my favorite land spot.
You, you may, is tell me surprises there are.
And that little L shaped thing, is that parking? No, you can see it. The space, I'm sorry, the space right here.
That is uh, access, uh, I think I see what you're talking about. That'd be access coming in and out. Uh, from South Boston Road on the east side.
The white spot, not the gray.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the gray spot, the um.
What is that?
You shoot to me again.
Right here.
Oh, that's uh, that, that's, that's not gonna be developed, that's gonna be uh. Just basically, uh, I guess, I don't wanna say vegetation is not the best word, it'd probably be just grassy area between the two. The, the patches of pavement. The access roads.
Yeah, it looked like, yeah, I guess my concern is should we put a little more distance between that cemetery and that road? Um. A little more footage. And maybe bring that grassy area in a little bit and make the road go back. I don't know if it's possible, but. People are very concerned about burial grounds these days, so.
Mister Fortune.
Yes.
Do you know if they had an archaeologist walk the ground?
I do not.
Is it marked or unmarked? The graves.
That I don't know either.
Okay. I would strongly recommend that those steps be taken.
I kinda agree. Since we know a cemetery is there. I just hate to see them destroy some graves that might be elsewhere where. And we just haven't found them or they haven't been marked. Another car. I'm sorry, another car wash. So these are actuals? What they wanna put there or suggestions?
This, this, these are, well, it's. It's, it's, it's preliminary, so it, it could change.
Now I was just thinking, there's already a car wash right down below, I guess it's still there behind CBS. So to have another one so close by. I mean, that's my only concern with the cemetery, I don't know if anybody else has anything.
And honestly, I kind of believe that should be a standard practice, particularly when we encounter.
Now, are there any charging stations going out anywhere over here? Or electric cars?
I don't believe, not that I'm aware of, I'm, I, it did not come up during the discussion, so as far as I'm aware, no.
So just you?
Yes.
Anyone else have any other question?
I mean, before we motion or anything, do they have to come back with answers for our questions before we? Do a motion or?
So if you were to defer it, uh, I would contact them and, and, and let them know. And, and, and give, and basically pose those questions to them, uh, come back to the commission.
Yeah, if you're, if you're going to request adjustments, then we should defer it and make sure the applicant, make sure the applicant's okay with the adjustments.
Any other questions or discussions? Do I have a motion?
I moved that the planning commission defer. S D P twenty four oh six South Boston Convenience Market. Site development plan request for a gas station slash. Convenience store car wash and commercial space with respect to tax map eighteen section A parcel. Fifty three. Um. Subject to receiving further information, um. Help me out here. Regarding the cemetery's limits. Um, based on, uh, based on an archaeological. An archaeologist walking the property and looking at such documentation that may exist.
I have a motion by Miss Kilpatrick, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Miss Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye. Five zero to defer. Okay. The next part is unfinished business. Uh, the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, twenty twenty four update. Trying to get the updated to. Twenty fifteen updated, so it's go forward and try to really go into. Looking at a future comprehensive plan.
So the slide presentation, uh, there's not a whole lot of news, a lot of this is just to remind the commission of, of where we are. Uh, code of Virginia requirements, comprehensive plan to be prepared and adopted. About the, uh, local planning commission prepares it and recommends it, the local government body adopts it. Uh, code stipulates at a minimum once every five years, plan being reviewed and or adopted. Uh, plan was last updated in two thousand fifteen, which Mister, Mister, they have just referred to. Uh, just to remind everybody, uh, we were trying to get, uh, the county in compliance with code, so. This was basically meant to be a readoption of the twenty fifteen plan with changes to sections two, five, and six. Now, section five was really data only. Um. And just to remind everybody, July ninth public hearing, that based on comments from the public, the commission deferred action. Requested revisions, uh, which I can pull, I can pull the plan up here for you in a minute. Um. We did make revisions to the plan and attempt to address those changes. Uh, and, and, and get it to a point where the commission would be comfortable. Uh, recommending adoption, uh, and uh. We're gonna ask the commission to, to make a recommendation tonight, so let me back out of this. Okay, so. I'm going to. Pull. Help me out there, it's on this one scroll down. So basically, I'm not gonna try not to get into too much detail, but we. Based on the comments and some remarks we got from Mister Diggs at the last meeting, we did, uh, make some changes. Uh. So here, can I get down to section two, why are you on bookmarks? Are we gonna go back up here and, and step on the link? There we go. Okay, so. This, uh, this section here, I'm just gonna scroll down, that had already been done before. Um, uh, so here's some of the changes we made, uh, page twenty six.
We can't see, it's not up there.
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't realize, it's not up there, okay, uh. Okay, let me see here. Share. Apparently tries again.
It's not on the TV, but it's.
Okay.
It's fortunate you're doing share screen or sharing the visual slide.
I was trying to do share screen. Let's try this, see what happens. Still not kind of up.
Can you end this slide show, let's start again.
Maybe, see here. All right, let's try this. Ha, okay. All right, so let me get back to where I was. Thank you for pointing that out, I just assumed it was going wrong. Okay, so. So starting with page twenty six, these are just basic changes, we up, we updated, uh, the um. Pipeline from the James River, uh, which is, uh, in early stages of construction. Um, this was. Uh, basically to, um. Address concerns that were, were aired about, um. The way the numbers were presented. So, um. So we put in approximately, uh, to, to basically. Say that it's not meant to be exact, or it's, it's an approximation of the acres that are in land use assessment. Um. That was, that was addressing concern that was brought up. At the last meeting, and then going on down to page twenty eight, again, just be giving approximations because. At the there, um. To address concerns there, um. What we decided to do here, the paragraph about Lake Monachio, um. I'm proposing that we, we address this on the next update, because that's gonna take some, some looking and some research to, to address. But I'll refer to the commission on that. And scrolling on down, um. Again, that's another one that we want to. Address by district in the next plan, if we are all possible, we need to work with the building department on that one, so that'll take some time. But that is on our, on our radar to, to check. Uh, just wanna let you know we are aware of that. That has the reason I have that highlighted, so as far as. The rest of section two, I believe that's pretty much all we did in section two, the majority of the changes I made here, um, are in section five. Section five, I'm gonna get to here in a minute, second, well, I thought it was. Now it's not letting me click on the chapters, okay. I apologize, apparently I'm technologically challenged tonight. Okay, so. Think I'm just back where I need to be. So we did update these numbers, you're seeing here on page ninety. Uh, competing patterns, uh, we got those from, um. Believers came from the, uh. Census, um, and those were updated for two thousand twenty one. Uh. There was a question about, um, the enrollment numbers here, we did check online and update the enrollment numbers. Uh, there's a wording change here, it originally said less than thirty miles west of Fluvana, I changed that to west of Palmyra, the county seat. Because, uh, it's, the campus is less than thirty miles from Palmyra. Same thing here for Pima, Virginia Community College, these are all just basically, ba- basic changes, kind of cleaned this up. Uh, I did make a change here to J Sergeant Reynolds, there was a question of. How the enrollment numbers came up from the workforce development, so what I did is I just changed that to the. Um, student enrollment for the college and then just stated that it also, the college also offers workforce development courses. Let me know if I'm going too fast. Uh, we did on page ninety two, uh, update the, uh, crime statistics. Uh, so you see I highlighted there, we, uh, these are twenty nineteen. Uh, figures. And we did the crime rate there, so Levanna County still compares favorably to the state and to many of the surrounding localities. Uh, we also updated the, uh, tax rates for, uh. Adjoining localities, which you'll see on the table on page ninety three, we updated that information for you. New hires in the industry was also updated. And the ten largest employers was also updated, this all information was all, uh, from twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four data to bring it more up to date. Uh, top ten taxpayer companies was updated for, uh, twenty twenty three data. Employment of the industry was updated. And unemployment rate, uh, comparing the county to the state was also updated. And actually, that's a typo, it should be twenty twenty twelve through twenty twenty three, but we have it up through twenty twenty three, which is the most recent annual data. And then. I believe that is most of the changes we have, seems to have anything in section six. So that's pretty much the bulk of the changes we made, basically just updating the data. To try and clean it up a little bit and get to a point where we could possibly get this updated and then go into a full update. Once the board adopts it, so that's, that's what I have for you on the comprehensive plan, I'll take any questions.
I think we need to move forward with this, so we can get going forward. I know Mister Fortune has a lot of, uh, experience with comprehensive plans, and I think he could really work with us, uh. We had so many problems with COVID and everything else, with the thing and all the things I already mentioned. So, but I think we need to, to, to get a motion and get this thing forward and, and start anew.
If you'll give me just a second, yeah, I'll get you back to the. There we go.
Are we ready for my?
Yes.
Um, I moved that the planning commission recommends adoption of the twenty twenty four update for the Levanna County Comprehensive Plan.
I have a motion by Miss Morgan to accept the update of the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty four update for the comprehensive plan, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mister Chiplet, all in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, food five zero. Thank you. The next item is amendment of. Twenty two days seventeen day seven and nineteen days nine day six zoning.
Thank you. All right, okay, hopefully that won't happen again till after we're done. Okay, just to remind everybody, uh, we presented a July request for the planning commission. Uh, I request to amend the Levanna County Code to amend zoning and subdivision fees. Uh, the fees were last adjusted in twenty eighteen, uh, the intent was to bring Levanna County in line with surrounding counties. Uh, it is expected the overall effect would be to potentially increase revenue approximately twenty five thousand, um. Uh, this was presented to the planning commission at its regular meeting in July and it was deferred. Uh, the two main concerns that we heard were, um, there was a concern about public hearing signs, if we get bigger signs with the lowering the cost for the, the sign deposit. Um. Cover the cost, replacement cost, and could there be a waiver process for, uh, the fees for the conservation even? Uh, for individuals who can't really can't afford the fee. Um, as far as the public hearing signs, we did look, staff did look into prices and we determined. As far as the public hearing signs, we did look, staff did look into prices, and we determined that the new proposed fee of fifty dollars would be enough to cover the cost of a new sign. In fact, we just, just to give you an idea, we actually just ordered some new signs that are the same size as before, and they're ten dollars each, so. As far as the waiver, I discussed this, and we discussed this internally, we're offering a compromise to basically lower that fee to a hundred dollars from the current fee. Which I believe I have on the next page is. Seven fifty. So we're proposing there's an alternative on, on the conservation unit to reduce the fee to a hundred dollars. So that's the, the revised fees again for you. Now I'll give you a second to look at this.
That's quite a compromise.
Is the thinking that the administrative cost of looking at. A needs-based request? Is too high?
No, no, it's mean a hundred dollars is not gonna cover a staff time to be ridiculous, we were just thinking if, if there are people who have a hardship. It's, we, we actually have looked into trying to come up with some sort of waiver process, and we could find really nothing comparable that would work here. So this, this is what we came up with, propose as an alternative, just reduce the fee to a hundred dollars.
From seven fifty to a hundred? For everyone?
Yes, correct.
What's that look like on the revenue, man?
Sorry. That's okay, I'll, I'll be totally honest, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we, I haven't done any since I've been here, but I've, I've been here a little more than three months, but it's, I'm getting the sense that we don't get a lot of these.
We, we might have one every other year, if that. I know, you know, Camp Friendship was two thousand seventeen, I'm not sure if there's been one more recent than that, but there hasn't been one since I've been with the county.
Any other question about this?
I have a question. Are there any? Thing we can do for nonprofits on some of these things? Nonprofit organizations, I know sometimes the county gives discounts to nonprofits. Because they're not money-making entities, and I'm just trying to find out if there's a way to alleviate some of these expenses for some of the nonprofits.
Normally what would happen is the board would waive the fee for a nonprofit. I think they've done that in the past for some of the fees, you know, building permit fees, zoning fees, so that. Has been the process in the past, so we didn't really. Put a process in the actual code for that, it'd really just be up to the board's discretion if they wanna waive the fee due to the nonprofit's nature.
So how would a person do that? Do we know, if they want a waiver, what would they have to do?
They would just send a letter to the board requesting a waiver of the fees.
Okay.
You have a question? Do I have a motion? Or resolution?
Okay, I move that the planning commission recommends approval of an ordinance to amend twenty-two dash seventeen dash seven and nineteen dash nine dash six of Levanna County Code to amend zoning and subdivision fees.
I have a motion, Ms. Morgan, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Largus Sino? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's booth five to zero. The next item is S U B oh five eighty-three, meta book phase four, HOA request to amend conditions.
So I have a slide presentation here, given conversations we had, did we wanna go through the slide presentation or just. Bring, bring the HOA representatives up for discussion?
I think we just bring them up.
My stomach agrees. Karen Bull's back here sending me pictures of food.
Glad I turned out my vote.
Okay, so just to remind everybody, there was, there were fifteen conditions attached to the additional approval, the original approval for the subdivision. Phases one, two, and three have been completed. There's, there's a question about condition six, seven, eight, eleven, which the homeowners association have asked to be. Basically, they've asked to be released from those conditions, this was deferred by the planning commission in July, this has been discussed. So, there, the question has come up, and I'll let the. The representatives from the homeowners association speak to this, as to. Whether they are willing to be flexible on the conditions regarding the recreational amenities in particular trail, and also. Discuss the fire suppression in that subdivision.
I was here with you all about a month ago, I'm Lois Havastrom, I'm with Southern Development, and we are working on the last residential phase. There you get some questions for the HOA, they sent a letter, but we brought the president and their secretary tonight for you. Just a couple points of clarification here, the request is about this two thousand and five letter that had conditions for the subdivision. This was a rural cluster buy right subdivision. This two thousand and five letter came as a surprise to nearly everybody recently, I'm not sure I fully understand. The planning commission's authority in two thousand and five to do what it did. But there's a handful of them, conditions on there that both the HOA and as a builder, we thought should. Be removed, since they couldn't have been required legally in the first place, and that is. What needs to be contained in the open space, which was six, the playground picnic area basketball, which was seven. The engineered fire suppression, a ten thousand gallon holding tank, which was eight. And then eleven sort of repeats earlier about non-motorized trails for non-motorized traffic. Those are the things that we requested be removed, and I believe the HOA would ask, was likewise asking it to be removed. It infects, it affects right now both pieces of property, so it's their open space. And common area that impart, and then our last little section that we are building out. And ultimately, the open space there that will be deeded to the homeowners association, so just again, point of clarification, it's sort of. Everybody's request. But I understand you might have more. Uh, you can talk about.
Sure, so Mr. Fortune. Came and talked to us prior to this meeting, and there was a couple points that he brought forward. The HOA does have a building bathrooms and a playfield area, and they find that that's been adequate for this neighborhood. What we would offer to enhance that. In the phase four section that we control, the concern with the existing board members with the trails. That were proposed is that they would encroach onto homes, so we would propose adding a trail system that would not encroach on homes in the new phase. That has a large area of open space, and that would be done during the construction of phase four that we're working currently on. And I've talked with the current board, and they're in agreement to the location that we talked about outside, actually. So hopefully that. Is something that would be kind of help branch out. As far as the fire suppression, the closest, we talked about dry hydrants in a pond, there are. Public water hydrants a mile and a half away on Route two fifty. And I think in my mind, that is more adequate area for fire suppression than trying to drive down a farm road. Not knowing the condition of that farm road, and once you load that tanker, it becomes very heavy, and I'd hate to see if it grained heavily. Few days prior, so I feel like within a mile and a half, it can rotate the tankers to that point. And then there is a fire station that is two miles away as well from this neighborhood currently. So that I offer as well. Information, sorry.
So I think the other thing that was, came up was some sort of, I don't know if agreements is the right word, with the, the local fire department, fire station?
No, if you couldn't identify a source, then one, one other way around, it would be ask the local fire station what they can provide with the initial response. But with the hydrant that he's describing, I've used that standard before.
There's multiples, all the way down.
Yeah, it keeps me with.
Yeah. Our night, we're together here, so.
So the question becomes, does, does that, Sarge, any concerns the planning commission would have as far as, basically removing these conditions that are listed? Or does the commission have any other concerns?
And I, we did bring some photos of the existing pavilions, so it's not just a six by six, it actually has lavatory facilities. We actually had the last HOA meeting there.
Playfield adjacent.
Yeah, and there's a large playfield adjacent to the property, it's a very pretty neighborhood.
Do we have? Any further questions?
So.
I think they've addressed.
I think they've addressed our issues.
I think they have, just a procedural issue with respect to the offer for the phase four trail. Do we replace that? How do we affect that change?
Dan, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, could you pull up that condition, the deal, oh, it's number six?
Number six and then seven.
So number six, we would need to amend condition six to state that open space in phase four would contain walking trails. It seems to sound, that sounds like the intent of the developer.
Okay.
That's correct.
And do we, what do we do for seven, since they look like they already have something there?
So I think we could have, you know, amend seven as well to state, you know, it contains a playfield and a picnic area, they have underneath the pavilion, that's a picnic area. So I think you could amend seven as well, just to state the open space contains a playground and a playfield. I mean, sorry, picnic area and a playfield.
Yeah, pavilion and picnic area.
And Dan, you seem to need to. Amanda either the other two conditions?
No, I think we can remove number eight, it sounds like they have a plan in place to address our concerns.
So removed, do we have to put in there that there is a plan, or do we have to state what it is? Instead of removing it and not having anything?
We just found out there's a fire hydrant.
I mean, do we need to state that in this document, instead of just wiping out number eight, number A B, that there's a fire hydrant on Route two fifty, or whatever? Right.
Yeah, so is.
So that would cover them, because they, they've said they have it, but we, don't we need to reflect it?
So Dan, we conditionate the amended, just to state that there are dry hydrants a mile and a half away, or, I'm not.
I think you could just say that they will submit a plan to address fire suppression, so the plan would show the. Written plan would show, you know, the hydrants and then the fire station.
Could, could you do that as a note on the plan in section four?
That, that hydrants are available on Route two fifty, so actually. Dan, our request was to remove those numbers six, seven, eight.
Eleven.
And eleven, so I know we're amending them, and I think that's fine, we're okay with that. If that's what you wanna do, but our official request was to remove them. But I think.
There's a lot more that's wrong with this letter from two thousand and five, too, and we didn't address some of the other ones and saying, hey, remove them, because. It just sort of seemed somewhat, some of it's even a little nonsensical, design a minimum of three hundred and fifty feet of open space between lots. In each cul-de-sac, and I pointed out in my letter that I sent back in July that. That verbiage doesn't match any of the plats, because it's not open space between lots, it's. Open space between the actual cul-de-sacs that they were after.
Up to us tonight is this here.
But my point is, if we leave this letter stand, then we also have the one that says applicant is required to meet the hydrological test requirements, which state that the division. Has a capacity of.
There's no request.
For us to do that.
It's in here, it's in the original letter.
It's not in our.
Right, but it's not part of your request.
So I guess what I was saying, do we remove or amend, and I think as long as the, I'm looking at the board, if they're okay with the modification to them. Then I'm okay with that, and I think Howard suggested that we add a note that there are hydrants.
Right.
Public hydrants on Route two fifty, and we can add a note to the plat, and I can have the surveyor add the note to the phase four plat. And that's fine with me.
So that would cover.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
So I think my suggested motion would need to be tweaked here.
Yeah, in the motion, we would need to address each of the amended conditions and how they're being amended, each of those conditions.
Yeah, so, okay. So how about this, Dan, I move that the planning commission approved amendments. To condition six, seven, and eight for, for S U B five eighty-three, and then leave the rest of it alone as is?
I think also one at eleven, then we need to tweak eleven to say that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, Linda, it's just the trails.
Trails would only be in the open space of phase four.
So is that not covered under the compromise, except for?
Yeah.
Condition six?
It seems to be more appropriate for eleven.
Eleven's more specific.
Yeah.
So I mean, you could just remove six and just amend eleven is one option.
I think that's cleaner.
Okay, so. Yeah, that's, yeah, I think, I think so.
Yeah.
Remove six.
Let me amend eleven.
Or even just keep eleven, because we're gonna add the trail.
Right.
Yeah, but it had.
Non-motorized traffic.
Correct, yeah, we, we don't want motorcycles and all that going in there, so I think that's fine.
Like it is.
Yeah.
So basically, the motion would be to, to approve removal of condition six and amendments to condition seven and eight. And then the rest of the motion, Dan, could that be left as is?
Could you go back to the motion?
Yeah, actually, give me just a second here, there we go.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Just by now we're off.
I did the last one.
I did the one before.
Okay.
I can help you out if you need.
Do you have any, do you have any other discussion about it, I think we've touched on some resolution, do I have a, have a motion?
We're just up here, so.
Sure.
So, so I move that the planning commission, I guess just repeat after me, because I can't make the motion.
Right, I moved that the planning commission approved removal of condition six. Removal of condition six.
And amendments to condition seven and eight.
An amendment to condition seven and eight.
For S U B oh five eight three.
For S U B oh five.
And the eight three, and you can read the rest as, as is.
Your request for.
A request for.
An amendment to.
Amendment to.
The conditions of the rural cluster subdivision.
To amendments of the rural cluster subdivision approved for forty-six lots pursuant to section nineteen dash seven dash two of the subdivision ordinance with respect to. Sixty-five dash three five seven acres, a tax map, tax map twelve, section A, partial four, six zero five seven seven acres, a tax map. Twelve. Section A, partial five, for the total of one hundred twenty-five nine, nine point nine three four acres. With all those numbers.
I have a motion by Mr. Chiplet, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Kilpatrick. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She votes aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now is the time for the second of two public comment sections. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on anything on the county? Please come forward, state your name and address, and you will be limited to five minutes.
Hi, Jason Sweeney, three, four, five, six, James Madison Highway. Um, I started just with a question with the upcoming public hearing for this resolution. How soon before that meeting will we get a copy of whatever the, then current draft will be? Is that going to be a couple of days before?
So we, we, our, our process, we try to get it out the week before.
Okay.
So, uh, so we, we've been trying to tighten up our processes, but we'll try to definitely want to get that out the week before the, the public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, three quick points on that. I spoke with some of you, but I didn't speak to all of you, so I just wanted to bring up one point of clarification or question for y'all. On the three percent limit and the five hundred acre per project limit, you know, I, I, I'm a lawyer in my real life and I do contracts. When I read that language, it read to me, it says something like three percent um, as measured by the whole project, including the solar panels and equipment period. And as a lawyer, when I read stuff like that, I read that as limiting. It sounds like the panels and the equipment only, which is another way of saying under panel, five hundred acres under panel of solar. And when I had spoken to some of you, I heard, I think that the intent might not have been that. So that's a, I think, a significant point of clarification that y'all need to wrestle with. With whatever the intent is, is it going to be? You know, three percent of the county can be solar panel as measured, but directly under the solar panel, or are you going to measure it by the project? And it's a big difference because based on what I researched, the average solar project only has somewhere between twenty-five to seventy percent of the total project in the solar panels. So there's, it can be a significant amount of the, of the footprint does not have solar panels on it. So if it's, if it's only twenty-five percent, you have five hundred acres under panel, that's a two thousand acre solar project. So it's a big difference depending on what you guys intend. So I think that needs to be clarified one way or another.
Um, we did take that out.
Okay.
We took it out.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Great, great. Um, two other ones, again, I've shared with some of you, but I didn't get to share with all of you. Um, a big one, I'm sorry, Nadine left, um, is the, the property value impact. I, I, I read what you guys did with that section with the cultural report requiring the developer to like submit to you guys as you're thinking about these things, a cultural report. And I, I'm advocating that the developer also have to pay for a property value impact report. And that I urge you guys to do that, a- ask an appraiser, have the county be in charge of hiring the third-party appraiser so that it's truly an arms-length third party. And that you guys limit that scope to directly, the properties directly around. Because like Nadine is a perfect test case. Nadine has a project right now that would literally be right up against her lot line of solar panels. And that's going to impact her property value perhaps significantly. And I would hope that when you guys are considering whether to approve that kind of a project, you would have something in front of you that would say, hey, if you approve this product toward Nadine's property value, or, you know, she's going to lose thirty percent of her equity, or ten percent, or five percent, or whatever it's going to be. But I think that's a significant issue when, whenever there's a residential property in particular that's right next door to one of these projects. Um, and then the last piece I wanted to advocate for, I, I read and I liked, you guys were doing some, some work around the, um, landscaping around the edges and saying, hey, we want to get, if we can, preserve the existing trees. I love that. My, my concern though is that the pattern that I've seen, looking at the local projects that we've had lately, is that a lot of them are coming up from forest companies and they clear cut down the bare dirt, then they sign a lease with the solar company and by the time they're developing it, it's just bare dirt. And so if, if that's the pattern, I would suggest you guys come up with some extra regulations that say if you're a bare dirt development, you have to do more landscaping. I would actually make that kind of onerous and expensive on these developers. Like, I think you guys have an eight-foot tree limit in there right now. But if, I would say if it was a bare dirt, make them put in bigger trees at the beginning. And the reason I say make it expensive is because it, what that would do hopefully is that when these solar companies are going to lease land, they would actually talk to the forest company ahead of time and say, hey, don't cut down these trees on these edges and keep them in. So it provides like an actual incentive on the very front end of this thing to preserve some of the trees. So that, that was my last point.
Anyone else wish to come forward to speak on any item? Please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes.
Michael will tell one.
My folks never did not tell one.
Hi, I'm Karen Bowles. Um, I appreciate you all being here and I only have a few things to add. Um, I would like that, I would like you all to consider if you haven't setting limits as to how close a utility scale solar plant should be constructed to areas like Palmyra, Lake Monticello, Troy, Scottsville, Fork Canyon, et cetera. Because other, most all other counties have had those provisions. Also, I would like to, um, bring to your attention that Route six is listed as a Virginia byway, which is a pretty special designation and something worth saving. A solar farm construction on Route six would likely remove that designation because of the qualifications used. This area should be exempt from any solar development at least a half a mile on either side of the road and no solar exit or entrance should be used on Route six. Um, I'll skip a couple of them because Jason addressed some. The current solar recommendation requires specifications for proposed equipment, including material color, finish, country of origin and racking type. Requiring a history of the solar panels themselves and the parts within would assure Fluvana that no parts were made using child labor or using coal mines or materials made under less than U.S. standard safety and pollution regulations. And you can get that information according to the people that I talked to. Um, I, I also want to respectfully point out that we have a lot of, I, I'm surprised that we have so many power systems engineers and electrical engineers in Fluvana County. And, um, it seems a little questionable, and this is not a question, that we have had, it seems Fluvana County has been taking advice from a political science major from W N L University with no background in engineering. He made a comment, he made a, a request to you all to be more lenient than the committee has, has suggested tonight. And I just ask that you, um, this particular person and company, while they say they're a nonprofit, have a dog in the fight. They stand to gain for every single solar plant that comes to Fluvana County. The person that we have asked to be our consultant stands to gain. So I think we need to think about that going forward. Um, and, and while this person is, is a nice enough fella, I just think we need to look at who we've been asking. I know that one meeting here where it's very clear, very, been very clear tonight that the people who are here during the meeting are not tall. However, a representative from Energy Right at the last meeting was asked from the table to comment. So I just, um, on behalf of some of the citizens that I've been talking to, just asked you to consider the resources that we have in our county who are not making any money for giving their expertise. And some of them are longtime experts in the field. So I thank you for all your work you've done on this. Um, I know it's a long night and I appreciate each of you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll be limited to five minutes. Is anyone coming forward? We will end the second of the public comment sections, uh, for tonight. Uh, if there's. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn at nine fifty-six P M.
Does Morgan makes a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-six P M? Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Schiffler. All in favor, say aye.
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 I ain't never seen you go jump to see anyone coming forward sometimes.
Well, my plan is to be there.
The tall guy.